Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with our roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Gary Bravetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
Noel Sawyer.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you will all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number four ceremonies presentations and we have one from Mr. Ospak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. You may recall, some of you, about two years ago, we received an award from the American Public Works Association for the challenging Shady Lane Storm Sewer Project. And I'm once again pleased to report that our team of consultants and contractors that support your city have been recognized by their peers, our peers in the industry, for their innovation and excellence in the design and construction of the Fountain Creek project. You recently saw the presentation by Kipdenine. And on Tuesday, at the Colorado Chapter, the American Public Works Association Annual Conference, the city was presented with another plaque from APWA for our Fountain Creek project. So, big thanks to our innovative consultant and quality constructor that supports us to get this award.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, move on to number five, additions, deletions, or corrections. I believe there are none. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we will move on to the consent calendar.
Two items this evening, the minutes of the October 2 regular council meeting and then the combined statement of expenditures for August and September. What questions may we answer?
Move to approve? Second?
Second.
Bravetto.
Yeah.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. We move on to number eight, ordinances on initial posting. And Ms. Parnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This request is for our applicant, Mr. William Page, who is the manager and also the architect for the proposal at hand. This request is for Gold Hill Square North. And the request is to add seven extended stay dwelling units above the existing business at Gold Hill Square North. And this request has been reviewed by staff through several of the zoning ordinance regulations. Also was presented to Planning Commission last Thursday night. And they did recommend unanimously approval. Was going to get into further detail with you at the public hearing as this is the first reading. So, we're just recommending that you approve upon initial posting ordinance 1221 and set the date for the public hearing as November 6, 2014. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Harvey?
What is an extended stay dwelling? I've not seen that phrase before.
These dwelling units will be utilized for more than 30 days in accordance with our building code. Any more than 30 days is considered a longer-term residential dwelling unit. And extended stay anywhere from six months to a year, not a long-term duration is what he's thinking. And I'm sure Mr. Page can elaborate on that more at the public hearing as well.
So, under 30 days, what would that be defined as?
Under 30 days would be more of a hotel lodging type of scenario.
Okay. There are some homes in town that I know are now renting to Paris Bible College students as well as tourists, private homes, in residential areas that rent for under 30 days. What do we define those as?
Yeah, those are more apartments rentals.
No, these are homes, single-family homes.
Okay.
There's a couple in my neighborhood, as a matter of fact.
I'll have to, I'll have to look at my, my code and bring that back to you.
Okay.
I think Sally can provide an answer because we went through this issue, Lisa, I think, before you got here.
Oh, okay.
How those, those types of residences were handled.
Oh, okay.
Those are vacation rentals and we consider them still as single-family units. So, they're in compliance with our zoning regulations.
Sally, I know that one of them has a website and they have a tax license. So, who collects the taxes?
The taxes are remitted to the city and to the other appropriate agencies.
Are they considered a VRBO? And so, there's a, is lodging tax applied to those?
Lodging taxes apply.
I think that's the ultimate question that you're getting to.
That's what I wanted to hear. But they're also in compliance with our zoning regulations. We consider them as still a single-family home.
Okay. Thanks.
There are a plethora of such websites, Airbnb or Couchsurfing or whatever. If Couchsurfing is free, would that, would they have to have a license to allow somebody to stay free in their home?
I'm not very familiar with the Couchsurfing term.
Look it up on Google. Okay, but Airbnb, of course, they're, they're collecting some of it. And are the businesses, I mean, homeowners in town aware that they need to have a license to do that?
We will check into that.
Okay. But this did come up before because there were some Paris students that were moving into some apartments at a lower level of one of our single-family homes and our homeowners association was quite concerned about that. What we were told at the time is up to five unrelated people could live into, you know, a single-family home and it wouldn't violate. And, and they can't have a second kitchen. That, and I think our ADUs allows for that second kitchen and you could have unrelated people. So, we have some variations that make sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any other, any other questions before? All we're doing today is going to set the hearing date two weeks from, for November 6, excuse me.
I did have one question. Will this involve TIF money?
Right. Mr. Page has gone through in 2011 the DDA and did receive a projection of a 75% TIF for improvements. So, and I can expand upon that also at the public hearing.
I just brought it up because I wanted you to be aware for next time this might come up.
Thank you.
That's a TIF for businesses, not residences, isn't it? The DDA? It's not for residents, it's for businesses. None of it's apartments?
That, there was a theater expansion.
Oh, yeah.
That was in conjunction with that.
Thanks, Lisa.
Uh-huh.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll call for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 1221 on initial posting and set the public hearing for November 6.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Bravetto.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We will move on to public hearings. Before we do that, I should have my piece of paper.
For the use of the iPads?
Yes. One side say.
Okay.
Cindy, would you please paraphrase what that?
Yes, I will.
Mayor, you would say that's what I meant to say?
Yes. For the record, be aware that the City Council uses electronic devices to receive their packet information at no time. Is there any communication between council members or other parties while using these iPads?
That's exactly what I meant to say. And if Erin was here with us, she'd be very proud if she did this. So, thank you very much. We will move on and for the consideration of ordinance number 1196, we'll call for Ms. Riley.
Thank you. 1196 is the ordinance with respect to Teller County Waste and their request for a conditional use permit, special use permit and site plan review. And we have been working closely with the applicant's consultant to mitigate or provide a proposal to mitigate the impacts to County Road 231. That proposal was submitted to the county at the time of the packets to go out. We had not heard from the county. I just heard from the county yesterday that they have accepted the proposal. So, we will indeed move forward on November 6 and have our public hearing tonight. I would request that you table this action to November 6.
Thank you, Sally. That should be easy.
Yeah. So, the county has accepted this. So, on the 6th, we should be able to finalize this thing.
Yes.
Good.
Any other questions? And I'll take a motion to table.
Move to table ordinance number 1196 concerning a request from Teller County Waste for the approval of a conditional use permit. And we do have a date certain for tabling. That would be 6 November.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer. Schaefer.
Yes.
Bravetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move into new business and presentation of our draft budget. And looking forward to this for my first time. Welcome, Mr. Butterey.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, the chambers are overflowing with people who want to learn about our budget. This evening, year after year, we expect crowds. I didn't, wasn't talking about quality. I was talking about quantity. This evening, the FY 2015 budget presentation will be the budget message and some of the different funds. Wally's going to join us at the podium and before I get started with the budget message, he has a short presentation to make.
Thank you, David. Mayor, councilors, I'd like to read just one paragraph from a letter I received earlier this month from the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFLA. It says, "We are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER, for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2013 qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management." Are there any questions about the, about the award? If I may, I'd like to pass it around to the council members.
Please do.
And how many years in a row? Wally, is this?
Thank you. This makes 21 consecutive years of City Council.
So, Wally has his work cut out for him for year 22.
Some big high heels to fill.
Congratulations.
So, this evening, as part of the budget presentation for the schedule, we'll be doing the budget message and I'll be talking about the general fund, the grant fund, debt service funds, and the street fund. At the end of the evening, of course, we can do page by page, as we've done in the past, of each of the funds. And then at the next meeting, we'll also review the DDA funds, other debt service funds, and the enterprise funds and talk about any components of the budget that you like. Recently, we've had some discussion on a possible work session. That, of course, is up to you to decide whether you want to have a work session to discuss the budget. We put it in the schedule. We've arrived at a date. But you get to decide if you want to have that meeting to further discuss the budget or do some other work that is the council's desire. But tonight, we'll follow through with our normal protocol of the message and then a review of the different funds as listed and we'll do page by page. And where you have questions, we'll answer those. And if we're not able to provide a sufficient answer, we will get those answers to you. So, with that, in the 2014 budget message, I wrote to the City Council and the community that our biggest challenge for 2014 would be in determining what major expenditures we would like to make utilizing fund balances beyond those already programmed, i.e. above the 10% emergency reserve that council decided we should have. Earlier this year, in April, in fact, this council took the bold yet appropriate steps to select three very important projects that will benefit the community for decades. Council agreed to use certificates of participation to renovate both the fleet maintenance facility and Memorial Park. Concurrently, council agreed to pursue going into debt to build a much-desired aquatic center and its associated infrastructure. All of this will be done without raising taxes. As can be imagined, with committing to these three projects, there is no room in the budget for other general fund capital projects. However, these commitments are not intended or expected to have any impact on the city providing the excellent level of municipal services that our citizens deserve and have come to expect. This is truly an exciting time. This 2015 budget presentation will be similar to years past. We'll end each fund summary with a calculated fund balance. I'm now on page B at the top, without consideration of the three capital projects. What I wanted to do was present to you a budget in the format that you were used to seeing. And then at the end, we will, as much as you want to, we can talk about how the inclusion of the capital projects, the impact it will have on the different fund balances. And I've done that in a separate but attached addendum. The year 2013 ended extremely well financially. That's our most current audited year. That's the year that we have the facts for. And in 2014, we appear to be heading in the same direction. Revenues are strong and the city staff has been diligent in reducing operating costs whenever possible. This position allowed us to retire our street bond debt ahead of schedule and to posture ourselves for considering these major capital projects. Council's decision to move forward with the three major capital projects is monumental in what it will provide to our citizens. While monumental, it will also be limiting in the flexibility that the city has had in the past to take on smaller projects of opportunity that have also benefited our community. Healthcare costs continue to rise. We're expecting a 7% increase in healthcare costs to maintain a similar level of coverage that we currently have. This increased cost will be shared between the city and our employees using the same ratio as we have done in years past. The inflation rate that we are using for the 2015 budget is 2.9%, only slightly up from last year's 2.77%. I am proposing a 3.9% pay increase pool that includes the 2.9% inflation and a 1% for merit-based pay-for-performance system.
Is question time?
You can ask a question anytime, I suppose.
The inflation rate is 2.9%. I am curious where you got that from because the COLA, for instance, for retirees and stuff like that, is projected to be about 1.7%. And in consideration of the fact that this year, my understanding, even if it's 1.7%, that even exceeds what the normal private pay sector is going to get for, as an inflation adjustment. So, I'm curious to see what the 2.9%.
Sure. It comes from the Denver, it's, first of all, we look at a regional inflation rate, not a national because I think you could understand each region is a bit different. The inflation rate that we've used for the 17 years I've been here has been the Denver Boulder Greeley Consumer Price Index unit from mid-year to mid-year. So, you can go to, I think it's DORA or DOLA, some state agency, and you can find the increases every year. And the increase between mid-2013 and mid-2014 was this 2.9%. So, that's the inflation rate. That's the process that we use to determine that. It's what is in our region.
And you use that for all your calculations at same CPI?
We do. We also, as council may recall, every three years, we do a market survey for our, for salaries to see how we compare with other like entities or nearby entities. And in the interim two years, we do an informal survey. Informal survey said that our salary range should shift up 1.9%. That 1.9% is included within the 2.9% inflation rate. And as you, as council is well aware, in 2008, we implemented the merit-based pay-for-performance system so that we, we do annual evaluations on employees and we have a bell curve of the distribution. So, exceptional employees get a little more money at the end of the year, or actually the next year. Those who are average get kind of an average increase and so on. So, that's, that's the process that we use for determining the inflation rate.
Okay. Well, this, this inflation, does it apply just to the personnel expenses? Or does it apply to copiers and, and, you know, all the other little breakdown of the administrative expenses?
I really leave that up to the department heads. I can tell you that in some years past, when, in many years past, just an overall inflation rate was applied to expense lines as it was for, for employees. But I'm, I leave that up to the department heads. They do their analysis and you can see that some of the lines have gone up. Some have gone down, some have stayed the same. So, I allow them to determine based on their expertise in their fields whether or not they should apply that inflation rate.
But David, you used that inflation rate when you were projecting the cost of incurring debt for the capital project, the aquatic project?
I did not use the 2.9% specifically. What I did was I looked to, remember the term that I use called real growth? Which is the sales tax revenue that we receive minus inflation? That delta is what I did use for the aquatic center and that was 1.9%.
Okay. Thanks.
But the plus 1% to make it 3.9 would only be on the personnel expenses, right? Because that's the merit pay thing. It would be 2.9 for all the other categories that were appropriate for increase for inflation.
No, no, no. The 2.9% in, it's really two separate issues. Inflation rate is 2.9%.
Right.
Boom. Done. Department heads get to decide how they incorporate that into their expenses. But from a utilization or determining what makes sense for an employee compensation, I start with the 2.9 and then recommend to you a small amount for the merit-based pay. It doesn't guarantee that an employee would get 2.9%.
Right. But, but the only, that 1% extra only applies to the merit pay pool.
That's correct.
Not the overall budget.
That's absolutely correct.
Because one of the basic premises we have for out-year revenues and expenses is that we show current year prices.
That's correct.
And the future years only are increased by inflation.
And no, the term I use, real growth.
Plus it, real growth in very rare, rare instances.
Correct.
Right. Like property taxes and sales taxes.
And we can, we can have that further discussion when we start talking about the bonds, if you so desire.
Another question, David.
Yes, sir.
Does the 2.9%, do the department heads look at a bell curve distribution on their staff members? So, some get less than 2.9, not, not including the merit base 1%?
It's possible. But department heads have, if they're a department that has no subordinates, then they do their evaluation of each of their employees. For those departments that are larger and have mid-level managers, they conduct the evaluations of the frontline employees, if you will. All of those are then collected up and it's a standard evaluation instrument. So, all of those are collected up and delivered to me and I rack and stack them and review everything and then assign the distribution based on the amount of money that I have. Because the 3.9% Because the 3.9% total amount isn't that much. So some employees may get 6%. You would think then some employees might get 1%. It's rare that it's significantly less than the inflation rate, but it has to be for the math to work. But very honestly, there are some employees who get no increase. If there are disciplinary issues or performance issues, and we really need to get somebody's attention, that's one way we can do it.
So they don't get the 2.9%?
No.
They get nothing?
They get nothing. It's extremely rare, but it's happened. And I can tell you that for the people that that's happened to, they're no longer employees of the city, with one exception that I can think of.
I think few of us are familiar with the federal civil service, where you get the cost of living pretty much automatically.
Yeah.
But that you get step increases based on performance.
You know, and that was my philosophy for several years, that that should be the minimum that anyone should get, but in order to really reward the high performers, I couldn't do that.
And for the record, federal employees haven't had a cost of living increase in three years.
The 2015 budget that we are presenting to you does balance in 2015. The staff made some hard decisions on expenditures to ensure that we could accomplish this. We felt that it was important to have a balanced annual budget this year so to give our citizens even greater confidence in our budget management so that as we move forward with the capital projects that will obligate us for many years. Budget year 2014 looks like it will finish strongly, although not as strongly as I thought it would. Our 2014 sales tax revenue has been consistently, but not dramatically, ahead of 2013. But I don't want to be inappropriately optimistic, nor do I want to be pessimistic. I want to be realistic. Our 2015 budgeted revenue approach is consistent with the approach we used in 2014. Our 2015 budgeted expenses are consistent with 2014. Funds have been budgeted for one half of a full-time employee for our Main Street program. This funding is flexible enough to fund either a halftime position for a full year or a full-time position for half the year. And recall that what I'm presenting to you is a budget that is without the capital projects. If we just look at the pure budget, then we end the year with, we would end 2014 with, I'm sorry, 2015 with a reserve above the 10% emergency of $775,000 and 460. That's above the 10%. It's that amount that we've been able to save over the years that will allow us to go into debt for both the COPs and for the bonds for the three capital projects. As it relates to the grant funding, no changes. Economic and downtown development, if all goes as has carefully been planned, 2015 should be a gangbuster year for economic development and the DDA, particularly in Woodland Station. The Aquatic Center with associated infrastructure will be huge for our community, Woodland Station, and the DDA. As of the writing of this message, other projects seem to be on the verge of becoming a reality. Now, I'm at the top of page D as in David. We are fortunate that the 410 Fund remains healthy and useful. We continue to make measured yet significant steps each year in improving our roadways and associated aspects of our roadways. The Water Fund continues to be stable. We are taking more aggressive steps to ensure that we have sufficient storage capability by pursuing a location for a second reservoir. And also, the wastewater fund continues to be stable. We have begun the process of funding and designing a wastewater treatment plant expansion. The scheduled improvements will extend the life of the plant for several decades. And in conclusion, this budget, coupled with the comprehensive plan that's annually reviewed by the Planning Commission, is the proposed annual work plan and major policy document of the city. It provides funding for services, programs, and projects that can reasonably be accomplished in 2015. We believe that this proposed budget sustains our obligation to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars while providing a high level of service delivery. After review and consideration, the city council may wish to add, or to add to, or cancel, or modify funded projects or activities prior to their adoption of the budget appropriation ordinances following the public hearing on Thursday, December 4, 2014. And as in the past, as we go through page by page, if you have a specific question about a line item, if you can give us that GL number, then we can hone in on that specific line as well and do our best to answer your questions. If the ballot passes and we move forward with the COPs, I'll redo the entire budget document as it relates to the summary sheets. I've done some of that informally with the addendum to show you what those balances would look like. But as we move forward with that, we owe it to ourselves and our citizens to have the full document that reflects those proposed expenditures. So with that, council, I'm prepared to move into the general fund portion of the budget, which is at tab 100, General Fund. We can bounce back and forth through the summary sheets as you need to. The pages for the funds and the expenses are not numbered. That's why stay with me on the tabs and then use the line numbers, and we can get to where we need to be to answer your questions. So department heads are well-versed. They're ready to go to answer any questions that you might have. So I'm on the general fund. Are we okay with doing it this way? Is everybody okay? So I'm on the general fund revenues page. Do you have any questions as it relates to that?
Well, let's start with the first line, property tax.
Okay.
Revenues.
Oh, man. It's gonna be a long one.
Well, I have provided, David, we've started a discussion between the two of us on specific lines, and I was hoping that he would be able to provide answers to me by, if we have the special meeting on Monday evening. So my preference, in fact, would be just to wait till Monday evening to go over all these. So he has a chance to look into my concerns and that sort of thing.
That's certainly council's decision.
Should I make a motion to do that? So which is...
Well, the review of the budget is, should be, a public review.
Right. And the Monday evening meeting is a public meeting.
It's a work session. So are you suggesting that we not even do any of this tonight? And I've offered to you to sit down one-on-one to go through the assumptions and the analysis to see if I answer your questions, because the rest of the council may not have them. But it's certainly council's decision.
Well, probably the most important thing this council does is review the budget. So we should spend a few minutes doing that.
Which is what we're prepared to do tonight.
Why don't we start with the summary page first?
Instead of nitpicking. Okay. Well, this is, I mean, this is a relatively routine thing. What I was going to raise is that it's just a calculation error, I think, or something like that. Some are more substantive than others. And that's what I think so.
We're prepared to answer questions tonight, but really, council, tell me how you want to do this.
I'd like to, before the general fund, you have the general fund, 2015 general fund budget summary?
Yes.
Why don't we go over that first, guys? Look at the big picture and then narrow it down. Well, is this going to be presented to the public again? I mean, suppose we have this work session, which is open to the public, and we iron out all of these little ideas, because this could last hours. I don't want to burden the public here at this meeting tonight with hours and hours of detailed work. Isn't the public get to see results of what we do? For instance, we have this at a meeting.
Tonight is, in my mind, tonight is for all practical purposes a work session, because we're reviewing as much detail as you want to on the budget. We don't present the budget as an ordinance on initial posting until the last meeting in November. And then you accept the budget as it has been proposed or modified at the first meeting in December. So there's numerous opportunities to review the budget. But, you know, I don't want to say this is the way we've always done it and we're locked into it. But that's the intent of the meeting tonight, is to review in as much detail as you want the different components of the general fund, the 410 Fund, and the other funds that we've listed on the schedule tonight, and do others at the next meeting. And then do the initial ordinance reading, the last meeting of November, which is still another opportunity to talk in as much detail as you like, and then do the ordinance in December. So if you decide that you want to do all of this in a work session, that's fine. But it's replicating, in my mind, what this meeting is intended to do tonight.
So I'm perfectly willing to start tonight. But if you don't have the answers to my questions yet, we could, you know, whatever.
Absolutely.
Pull up a cot.
Well, we haven't decided to have the work session yet, right?
Are me?
We haven't decided to have the work session.
No, correct.
Correct. If we get all the questions answered, maybe we can replace this meeting and not have to have the work session.
And I will say, this is how we've done it before, and it's all worked pretty well. It does take some time. But I like doing it in front of the public and the video that we have. Is the work session even televised?
Typically not.
Yeah. See, that's not fair. I think we need to get it in front of the public if they choose to watch or be here.
I agree. Ken, if it's okay with you, David, can we start with, like Noel said, maybe the big picture, go back?
Sure.
Does that make sense? Or should we start here?
No, I'm happy to. What you're suggesting is look at the general fund summary.
Correct.
This part of the budget message. Then after that, if you want to dive into the details of the general fund, both revenues and expenses, we're prepared to do that.
Okay. Why don't you start with the, if you have some questions there?
So for the benefit of all, we're on page R as in Romeo.
Correct.
Which is the general fund budget summary.
All right. So I'm hoping David can explain the numbers and just go through each line and where we're positive and where we're negative, and what money's coming in and what money's going out.
Sure. We start each budget classification with the audited fund balance, which is the last known fact that we have for all our budget lines. That is the audit from the 2013 budget. So the very first line is the fund balance for the 2013 audit. Those are audited numbers. Those are facts. They're not projections. They're not budgeted. They're factual. So it's our last known point for this entire process. We do a budget each year. That's what we're doing now. As we prepare for a budget, i.e. the 2015 budget, we have to do our best to guess how 2014 is going to end so that we know how to begin 2015. And I've described those steps within the budget message, those different terms. So immediately under the fund balance, we have the 2014 projected revenues. That's what the department heads, that's what our finance director, that's what I conclude that our revenues will be for the end of 2014. As a point of reference, the budgeted revenues for 2014 were about 7.1 million. We believe that we're going to finish 2014 slightly over 7.4 million. So then there's a subtotal. So you've got your fund balance plus your revenues. That's your bank balance, if you will, to continue on through this analysis. The 2014 projected expenditures are about 7.8 million. The budgeted expenditures were 7.76. So there's about a $60,000 difference in how much we spent, but there was about a $300,000 increase in our revenues. So the council may say, well, why are we spending more in one given year than we took in? Well, that's actually what you budgeted for. You allowed us to use about $600,000 of our reserve for one-time capital projects. You'll recall, we had the FEMA projects, we had the East Fork projects, we had many different projects. Plus, what's also rolled into that delta is the revolving loan fund numbers, and I'll talk about those as we get a little further down into this list. So you've got your 2013 fund balance plus your revenues that are projected, plus your expenses that are projected. And we project that we will end 2014 with a fund balance of 2.710374 billion. Remember, within that fund balance is the $1 million that the DDA owes us, because the generally accepted accounting principles demand that we include that $1 million in there, even though it's not liquid. But it's still considered a fund balance. Remember, our CAFER is an audit document. This is a budget document. So we have to account for that million in the audit. But as we work through, we know that $1 million isn't there to spend.
In other words, this is like an asset statement.
Yes.
Assets minus liabilities equals that.
Well, to a degree, but the assets aren't all in there. We don't list all the vehicles. We don't list the buildings. We don't list equipment.
And so the assets you listed are the million. In other words, those are bills that are out due. That is money that is expected to come in in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Let me change the voice. Okay. And then you do have some inventory, which is considered assets, too.
Correct. Typically about $150,000. And that's in that number as well.
Okay. So really, the bank balance that you can write a check against is you have to take out whatever assets.
And when we get to the bottom, I'll walk through that on how we do that with the 2015 fund balance.
Why don't you include the vehicles in the balance?
We do. In the audit, we do have an assets, there's a whole section on assets.
But why don't we do it in this document?
Because this is a budget. This is a budget. This is the document that allows council to authorize us to spend money to provide services and buy equipment. We can't take a truck and trade it for erosion control netting. So this is the document.
In that budget, you have to account for replacement.
We do. And once we have it, then it becomes an asset that's considered part of our assets, and we depreciate it appropriately. So this is your checkbook. There's very little different about this, except that $1 million from the DDA, if your brother owed you a million bucks, you probably wouldn't put that in your budget, because it's not there. But by generally accepted accounting principles for governmental entities, we have to include that.
And how long has that been there?
Since 2007.
I have that brother.
So we're now on line five, which is 2014 projected year-end fund balance, about $2.7 million. We believe, based on our input from the tax assessor and our own process for determining revenues, that the 2015 budgeted revenues will be about 7.2 million. So just immediately below that, we have a further breakdown of all the different expenses that the general fund realizes. And the first, as you might expect, is our people. So our personnel costs are shown there. Our O&amp;M costs are shown below that. Capital leases are shown below that, if we have a long-term lease. And I'll be honest with you, I can't remember what this $2,000 is for. We have a whole bunch of lease-type agreements for some vehicles. Then we have the capital projects and purchases, repayment of the revolving loan fund, which we're paying back ourselves. And I can give you a good demonstration of the revolving loan fund, should you want that. The lease is for the postage machine. A little birdie just told me that. Then we have debt service for the certificates of participation, and we have grant matching funds. So the true O&amp;M expenses for 2015 are that $7,94,341, which you'll see is less than what our budgeted revenue is. Then we have further expenses that are a result of our revolving loan fund process, and that continues to go down. And you can see that there are items there for the transportation study and a plethora of pieces of equipment. And at the bottom line, we say that in 2015, we're going to be spending that $7.286 million, which if you reduce that from the total fund balance at the top, leaves us $2.6 million as our reserve. Now, remember, what I want you to do is we're going to take that $2.6 million, and we're going to break it apart. We're going to break it apart and take out the $1 million. So skip down to where it says year 2015 adjusted fund balance designation. So from that $2.634, we pull out the $1 million. We pull out the inventory that Bob mentioned. We have a Tabor requirement that says you must keep a certain percentage, and it's about, it's about 9% or something, in a reserve fund. And so Tabor mandates that we have this teeny-tiny bit as an emergency reserve. And then the residual is really that last line, fund balance unrestricted, unassigned.
I thought our reserve, though, was close to 700,000.
Well, let me get, because that's yet another deduction. So this is called unrestricted fund balance. So this is called unrestricted fund balance. Unrestricted fund balance is the 1.223 million plus Tabor. If you add the 1.223925 to the 255,000, that gives you a subtotal of 1.478 million. You see that down there near the bottom?
Yeah.
From that, we take out the 10% reserve. The 10% reserve is based on 10% of the O&amp;M expenses. That's the calculation that's just immediately above that. So we take away from the 1478925, the 703465, 703465 being 10%, that's the emergency reserve. And the residual, the 775460, is above the 10% reserve.
So the Tabor adds 9% above the 10%?
No.
Or is it part of the 10%?
It's part of it.
Okay. So we're required to have 9% anyway, reserve, and we're doing 10%?
Let me, no, I did my math way too quickly. The 255,000 is a calculation that is, again, a piece of the total O&amp;M, and it varies year to year. This particular year, whatever that percentage is of the 700, or the 7 million, gives us that. So it's much less than 9%. So, but we're allowed to use that, in my mind.
In your reserve.
Within the 10% that the council mandates. Because it's there, it can be used.
So we're just, our reserve, we're just reserving a little bit more than what is required of us, essentially?
About, you know, whatever that percentage is, yes. And it was just within the last year or two that council said 10% is adequate. You'll remember those discussions that we had. Historically, we've ranged everywhere from 9 to 18 or so. 9 was probably in 2009, the last time that we had it that low, and we've been growing it ever since. And council said, you know what? We've got a strong reserve. We have a relatively strong economy. It's stable. It's predictable. Let's drop the emergency reserve down so that we have money to do capital projects What questions do you have on the general fund summary?
Counsel, I want you to look at this very carefully again, okay? And look at the numbers. We really need to look at the budget this year and not go down 400,000 last year? We were over expenditures 400,000?
Yes, but it's worthy of a caveat. Because within that 400, there was a lot of RLF, which is not really an O&amp;M expense. We're repaying ourselves, but we still have to do it as part of the accounting. Plus, it was council's decisions to spend some money on some one-time projects.
That's fine. Also, we have to look at the COP debt service. That could change. Do you want to go into more detail about that if the Aquatic Center does pass?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. If the Aquatic Center passes, well, no. The Aquatic Center is a completely separate issue. COPs are going to be for fleet maintenance and Memorial Park.
Okay.
The Aquatic Center's a bond. But from a debt service perspective, we have to look at all three.
Okay.
So if we go with the COPs for fleet maintenance and the park, we're going to reissue those certificates of participation. And yes, the general fund component of that will go up, but so will the benefits that we're receiving from that. So I think the total goes up, I've got the number here, it's like 17,000 if we add those other projects. But you're absolutely right. We need to be careful to make sure that we can afford to do that, and I believe we can.
And we're not voting on the COPs. We're not voting on Memorial Park or fleet maintenance. So that should, when does that begin?
When the council is comfortable with this budget.
Right.
We have construction drawings for Memorial Park and fleet maintenance almost complete. Council allowed us to do that. So once we finish the budget process, and I get a comfortable feeling that we're ready to move forward with these, and that that decision may come after the election, just so you know the full picture, we're going to continue moving forward with the COPs. But the COPs can go forward with or without the approval of the Aquatic Center.
Right. So my point is, is that we can look at all these numbers right now. If the Aquatic Center does pass, these are all going to change.
No.
No, not the one I'm. Well, are you not seeing the negative coming through?
Only the amount in our emergency fund, or not our emergency fund, only the amount in excess of our emergency fund will change. Everything, all the other expenses are the same.
The COPs will go up. Just a nuance. The debt service associated with the COPs will go up, but the ability to pay those resides in the amount of money that's above the reserve. So it's the same theory, or same logic, that the council used to fund those extensive capital projects over the last couple of years, utilizing part of the amount that's above the reserve. So it's that same logic.
Nolan, the amount that will change is 775,460 if the initiative passes. Then we start eating that up for the aquatic project.
And the COPs.
And the COPs. If the initiative does not pass, then we start chipping away at that 775,000 with the COPs.
Okay. If you feel comfortable with it.
And so David had laid that out in a spreadsheet, looking at, I'll say, positive funds for the year. And I forget what the low year was and when it was. You have that available, I'm sure. But looking out into the future, you know, the life of the bond, we're looking at positive numbers for every year.
Correct.
And still maintaining the 10%.
Correct.
Reserve, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And we talked about RLF in here.
Right.
Well, all these numbers are backed up by the following sheets.
Correct.
Yeah. And so we will see the origins of all those numbers.
Correct.
And that's why, when I was reading, I only have a couple of questions on revenues, and a lot of that can be adjusted right at the very end of December.
Correct.
When we have sales tax results from, you know, these subsequent months over the next couple of months.
Council will recall that we typically update the budget message.
Right.
One more time when we get the sales tax results for the most previous month.
And what's important is, when you come up with a number, then that is then input for the next 10, 20 years.
Correct.
And so it's important that you get another 50,000 here or there, because it's a ripple effect across all those years, to provide that positive balance.
Absolutely.
And so that's why, in a sense, unless your tax revenues go down.
Yeah. Well, but what Bob is saying is that in 2015, the result, what I am budgeting in 2015, with very few exceptions, is what I'm saying will happen in the future.
Right.
Because we're not accounting for inflation, except in a couple of lines. So he's right. If we spend $5,000 on a nut, then that is going to be spent every year. But where I know of something specific, I took it out of the following years.
Yeah.
But it absolutely is true that what I'm saying is budgeted for 2015, for the most part, is what would be budgeted for the next out years.
Yeah. And so I was looking for, what are the single event things in an O&amp;M budget?
Right.
Like the USA Pro Challenge thing.
Right.
Or the School Resource Officer, or whatever. And those don't get rippled through. Those phase out or just drop out completely.
Correct.
And so when I looked at this, you know, I make sure that we reflected that in the numbers.
And we have.
And if I have a question, then I raise a question.
Okay.
But one of the areas I talked to you about, or at least sent the email on, was RLF. And you said you were willing to talk about that.
Sure.
For the newcomers on our committee, I think that's worth going into. Because, I mean, there's situations like under the 410 account, which isn't really a big problem. You have under.
Can we, if you want me to do an RLF discussion now, I can do that. But if you want to talk 410, can we wait till we get there?
Okay, we can do that, yeah.
But if council wants a kind of a description or a discussion on RLF, I can quickly do that.
No, my only comment was that there was a line here, RLF equipment. The budget for 2014 was $36,000. We spent $288,000. Now, I know what my mortgage, I mean, my car payment is every year, for the next five years, if that's it. And I don't like to see huge spikes, like all of a sudden, you know, you're paying 10 times what the budget was. So, but we'll get to that eventually.
Okay.
That's why I was concerned about RLF. Why do we have these swings?
Yeah, the RLF actually takes peaks and valleys out of the budget. That was its intent. But I can explain that whenever council wants me to.
Okay.
David, go ahead and explain it. I love your explanation.
Okay. I'm going to use a real-life example on them. I have to step away from the microphone. So this real-life example actually has to do with the Butterey family, okay? So the Butterey family about, I'm not practicing this, so be patient with me. Butterey family had a septic system failure in January about six years ago, and it was going to cost us $20,000. Kind of exaggerated. But a whole lot of money to fix our septic system. Despite the Butterey family's best saving practices, we don't have in our checking account this amount of money. But Mrs. Butterey, being the good fiscal conservative that she is, insists that the Butterey family have an emergency reserve. And the emergency reserve that the Butterey family had was $30,000 that had been built up over our entire lives. So when I got the bill to fix the septic system, I was able to write a single check to pay for the septic system because Mrs. Butterey insists that I have an emergency reserve fund. We borrowed the money from ourselves. I didn't have to go to the bank at 5%. I borrowed it at 0%. The Butterys, being good stewards of the emergency reserve, said that for every year, we're going to put back another $1,000. We're going to repay ourselves $1,000 to cover that $20,000 cost. It's going to take me 20 years, but that's the life expectancy of a septic system. So over 20 years, I can make reasonable payments back into this reserve fund. It's the same thing. It's exactly the same scenario. The revolving loan fund is a pot of money that resides within the emergency reserve and the reserve that allows us to dip into it to pay cash for a $40,000 car. And then the police department pays us back $8,000 a year over five years to cover the cost of that and to replenish the revolving loan fund. So the money revolves in and out. So we don't pay ourselves interest.
Right.
We pay ourselves back from each fund. So what it does is it eliminates the peaks and valleys. So when Bob needs a police car, he says, I can do that over five years. I don't have to spend $40,000 in a particular year. The money comes out of this reserve pot, and then it gets paid back over time. That's the theory behind the revolving loan fund, and it works very well.
Yeah. Being the spreadsheet fanatic, I am.
Uh-huh.
I had the idea that you could list on one column all the vehicles you have, and then the year would be across here. And you'd have when you're going to replace that car and for those five years or whatever.
And we had that. Mac will maintain that for us.
And at the bottom, you have for each year, this is what the revolving loan fund payment will be. And it should, like you say, be very predictable. You know what it's going to be next year and the following year. And that's why I was wondering why there would be, when you budget one thing, and all of a sudden you're spending hundreds of thousands of something else.
It really depends on the column you look at, because there are columns in the revolving loan fund sheet that reflect that cash payment that comes out of here.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have to show you that.
Right.
But then it gets replenished. So we are paying cash. For example, the street sweeper was, I think, $275,000.
Yeah.
And so we were paying for that over a 20-year period, maybe 10 years. I don't remember. Different vehicles, we pay back over different times. So we had that available cash, and we paid for it. And then the fund itself, the 410 fund, replenishes that at a prorated rate.
Okay.
So if we look at the 410 sheet, I think what you're seeing is the cash payment that was made. There have been years, though, where we would delay the purchase of a major capital piece until the next year. And so it shows up in that next year when it was actually budgeted the previous year. We did that with the Backer truck two or three years ago. We didn't, we didn't think we were going to buy it until the next year, but we ended up buying it that particular year. We'll have to explain that, too.
Yeah.
So that's revolving loan fund in a nutshell.
Okay.
David, I got a question. It's interesting to me that both the budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures for 2015 are less than this year. Can you speak to that?
Well, budgeted expenditures, you know, we try to get tighter every year, but part of it is the massive amount of money that we spent on some major capital projects that came from numerous funds to include the general fund. So some of it had to do with that. It probably is best if we go to the general fund tab, tab 100, and the details on the revenue. And so let me just take a quick glance. Yeah, our budgeted revenue for 2015 is 7.2 million, and our budgeted revenue for 2014 was 7.1 million. It's less than what we're projecting, but it's more than what we budgeted. And remember, I tell you, I always budget conservatively when it comes to revenues.
And expenses.
The expenses, again, I think the vast majority of that delta comes from some of the capital projects. I'd probably almost have to go page by page to see what the total differences are. Oh, I know, and, well, if you would allow me, as we go through each page, I'll start, I'll make some notes to define that difference.
That sounds great. Does anyone else have any questions about this page R before we move forward to the line items? Noel, you get all your questions answered?
I'll do it at a work session.
Okay. Then let's move on.
Okay. I'm on tab 100, which is the general fund, the revenues. What questions do you have about the revenue budget?
Where do we start?
First one, property tax. You'd said we were going to increase that by 2% a year. And the amount that you projected for the end of 2014 is 1,623,100.
Mm-hmm.
If you multiply that 1.02, you come up with 1,655,562.
Let me just stop you real quick.
Just about $25,000 more.
Correct. The 2% was what my assumption was for looking at the bonds and the COPs.
Right.
So that was an assumption long before we got the assessor's assessed valuation.
Okay.
We've received the draft assessed valuation.
Right.
And so the reality is not that 2%.
Okay, so the assessed valuation for 2015.
Uh-huh.
Is what you're showing there from the assessors.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's not a projection.
It is not. It is a budgeted number based on the information that we received from the assessor.
But for the future years, based on your discussions with the assessor, you think that '16 and '17 on would be about 2% a year.
Correct.
Over that 2015 number.
That is correct.
Okay. My next question is, down under intergovernmental revenue.
Yes.
The highway user tax fund.
Uh-huh.
You projected, at the prior beginning of, the 2014 budget was 276,151.
Yep.
We're only collecting actually 185,000 in your projection. And so your projection for next year would be 185. Why was that a large reduction on what should be a normal running annual, I mean, that should be pretty stable, I would think.
You would think. And it has been stable over the last 10 or 15 years. We received word that the HUTF funds would be decreasing for all entities, municipalities and counties. And actually, when the first message we got from CML, who brings us that data, was that the amount we would get for the 2015 budget was only going to be 90,000. Well, that didn't sound right to Wally and I, to go from 276 to 185 to 90. So we challenged that. And what they told us was that they, the information that the state received from Teller County for Triple Creek Victor and Woodland Park was erroneous, that our 2015 amount would be slightly more than 2014. be slightly more than 2014. What we still don't have clarity on is, is it the 2014 budgeted or the 2014 that we have projected? So I don't have an answer for that yet because I don't have it yet from CML. What I presented here is the worst-case scenario. I believe that the 2015 requested budget will go up slightly from at least 185,09, but it may go up significantly more. But I didn't want to count on that revenue until I get the information from the state.
Well, it's asking these kind of questions. It shows the hard work you're doing to come up with these numbers. So yes, that would be something we would come back to in December. That would be another adjustment.
Hopefully, within the next few days, we're going to get an answer from them.
And we will know a better number later.
Correct.
Yeah, this just shows that I look at big differences, and that's what budgeters do.
Sure.
And why is there swings in numbers, especially when you're trying to come up with a stable projection for the future.
I understand.
So if all of a sudden we lose $100,000 in a year, when do we know that's going to happen next year and the following year?
Which is why we asked the question.
Right. Okay.
I'll ask the next question.
Okay, go ahead.
Building department charges. Just curious on that.
Which line number is that, please?
100, 3440.
Next page.
Oh, sure.
Permit fees?
I'm sorry?
That's great.
Sure, the building permit fees, you know, and we only assumed that the building department responsibility is in 2014. And this is money that's just going to pass right through us to go from the fees that we collect to pay for the services that RBD has. Correct, Sally? Yeah. So it's basically a wash. There is an expense item that is also in here that will utilize those fees that we collect.
Okay. So is it revenue neutral?
You know, it has been so far.
Okay. Good.
So I'm still on the first page of the general fund revenues. Any other questions on that page? Okay. And if we could flip to the next page that begins with police charges and ends with fines and forfeitures, any questions on those? Wonderful. Then let's go to the last page of general fund revenues that starts out with miscellaneous and ends with general fund total revenue. Any questions?
Tom, can you explain the other financing sources and the transfer from, to the other accounts?
Sure.
From the other accounts, just for clarification.
Absolutely. The 510 and 520, of course, are our enterprise funds. They are a separate business entity. They rely on, they rely on city, general fund staff to provide them support. For example, payroll is done with general fund people to pay the enterprise fund people. Our mechanics repair their vehicles. So this is a calculation to determine how much they pay us. The enterprise fund pays the city for the services that we provide them. That explains the 510 and the 520. And you'll see, they're relatively uniform year after year. It's what they pay us to have the pleasure and the privilege of using the city staff to support them. Tip is smiling. That's a good thing.
410 is a little different.
410 is different. In 2014, the transfer from 410 was made up of three components. One was the salary for the street people, the street employees, that provide services for maintaining the capital infrastructure. That amounts to about $110,000 a year. For example, Bill Alsbach, who's a general fund employee, manages the pavement management system, which is a 410 function. So a tiny bit of his salary comes out of 410. That's reflected in that transfer, as is the traffic study. In this particular year, though, the big transfer that came from the 410 fund to the general fund had to do with the creek projects. It was about $200,000. When we do a capital project, no matter what the fund is, except for 510 and 520, we capitalize it under the general fund. So even though $410 paid for it, it gets transferred into the general fund. So that's where that $200,000 is. That's why the 2015 requested budget of 124 is about $200,000 less than the projection for year end 2014. We don't have all those capital projects that we're reimbursing the general fund for. Okay?
One of my problems with the 2013 audit was that we had these transfers to go to the general fund, but they weren't accomplished by the end of 2013, from what I understood to me. And so you showed a big, you didn't get as much revenue as you thought you were going to get. But I would hope that when you reject transferring money from one account to another during the fiscal year, we would actually do what you did.
Part of the 2013-2014 issue is that those two major projects, the FEMA project and the East Fork project, weren't complete by the end of 2013. So all that process had to be split between two years. And so there was money that was carried over from 2013 to 2014. I don't know if that explains completely what your issue is, but that was a reality of what happened. The projects spanned, they were planned for one budget year, but they were actually executed in two budget years.
Yeah, I don't think it had to do with the capital investments.
Okay.
I think it had to do, well, that's behind us. But yeah, and to the degree that we can show things in the correct fiscal year, that would be pretty good.
Of course.
Okay. Yeah, I did have one other question on revenues, and I'll let the revenues stand, but it's on the cultural and recreation charges.
Sure.
All those fees for the various sports that, you know, when people join, they pay so much for being in. There was some discussion during our aquatic project discussion about the city subsidizing parks and rec events or activities. And here it shows we're collecting basically $148,000 in fees.
Correct.
And later on, well, under expenditures, we're proposing to spend $306,000, which is a 48% recovery rate. So the question is, normal cities are recover between 60 and 80%.
And your source for that is?
From parks and rec directors in other cities, where we talked around what it costs to do their projects.
For all activities or just aquatic centers?
Most of them are all, parks and rec is a general thing.
Okay.
And not just aquatic centers.
Okay.
Because they're, most cases are combined into one thing. So that is something I'm going to raise under the expense side. I just wanted to bring attention. Here's the revenue side as to what we can, what we need perhaps to do about that.
Okay.
So you want to charge more fees, right? No, I want to subtract some expenses.
Oh. Okay. Well, that's when we get to the expenses, we can certainly explore those.
A question, David.
Yes, sir.
And I usually ask this every year. If you look at revenue from interests, and we've talked in the past about who's managing the city money, and are we satisfied with what they're doing? And is that an active interest on the part of someone on staff?
Absolutely. In fact, Wally, I'll let you talk about Contango, if you're comfortable with that.
Yes, your question is, is why are we projecting more interest in 2015 than our projection in 2014?
Who's managing that process?
Yeah, who's managing it, and are we satisfied with the return we're getting now?
That's a very difficult question to answer.
So I'll do it. I'll do it, Wally. In years past, we did that internally. About two years ago, we brought in an auxiliary element from Vector Bank called Contango? Contango? They help us manage our investments, and that's why the interest rate, that's why the interest income has increased. So is anybody actively watching it? Yes. People that are much smarter than, well, that's not going to sound right, people who are better qualified to do that kind of work. We've hired them to do that.
All right, and you're satisfied with their performance?
Very much so.
All right.
Well, I looked at this when I first got on council. We were paying 5% or so on our interest on bonds and things like that, but we're only collecting less than 1% interest in our investments. And that's one of my motivations for having paid off the bonds earlier, like on the road streets and things like that. And so we were able to, you know, take some savings there, I mean, from not having to pay so much interest.
Correct. Okay.
Any other questions on the revenue side?
Great. Well, let's get started with expenses then. And this year, you'll see that, to save some money, we've consolidated expense items on one page. We used to do one page, one expense item, so now we've lumped those together to save a little bit of paper. So I'm on the page that starts with legislative and ends with municipal court. What questions do you have about expenses on that page?
Line 3510, legal services.
Okay.
We had budgeted $55,000, and we spent $124,156, or at least you're projecting that.
Right.
Now, I know we've had some legal things, but whether it's, well, you know, mostly evolving.
So do you want me to tell you why the difference is?
But, yeah, I thought SERSA was going to cover a lot of this.
And they do. But there's a lot of it that is still our own city attorney, where SERSA doesn't cover that. For example, the officer-involved shooting that we had in 2012, there are special attorneys, special investigation portions that SERSA is covering. But when our city attorney is involved, we still pay that. So we had the Carley water break issue. We had the Canary fence issue. Let me see, what else we have? Couple of employee issues that ended in termination. We had a police officer that was accused of excessive force. We had to spend some attorney dollars associated with that. The ballot question, the bond question, all of those cost us money to do that. I'm not happy with having to spend that much money, but some years, the circumstances dictate that we have to. But we're doing our best to save legal fees. Aaron's not here tonight. You know, that saved us, I don't know, $600, $700.
Okay, so your projection of $90,000 in 2015, is that based on outstanding, still remaining legal battles or in the middle of?
To a degree. I mean, I think historically, we've been around that $55,000, $60,000. We're just in a bit more of a litigance time. We still have the bond issue, the COP issue, that we're going to be needing our city attorney involved with. So this is kind of a happy medium between a huge year that we've been experiencing, knowing that we're probably done with several of these issues. I don't want to say one, but some other ones still may carry forward.
So when you're in your projections for '16 on, do you come back down to that 50 level or are you staying up at 90?
I'll tell you.
Probably not.
No, I dropped it down to 70.
And then the legal fees, other specialized legal, budgeted 37.5, and you're not spending any this year.
Right.
But you're putting in 20 for next year. What is that?
That's for the charter review work, code amendment work.
Yeah. And can we just drop that?
I don't think we want to. I've had interest from several council members who've said there are things that we still need to look at as it relates to the charter. That's up to council to discuss and decide.
Well, we had expected some progress this year, and there's nothing being spent on it. There's no progress this year. So I was wondering what's happening to that.
I asked that same question, and if we decide that we want to go forward with a charter change regarding elections, that's $15,000 just to put it on a ballot in addition.
It's $21,000.
Well, there you go.
Then we maybe should ask for more.
Because we also have to pay for the lawyer's review.
Well, that's why I'm going to question that $21,000.
I can answer the 21. It's 15, and then we've also had to pay the Teller County clerk and recorder for her services for the November 4 election.
So the 15 was for the municipal election in April? Which, and we didn't know when we budgeted in 2014 for that, that we were going to have a bond issue, so that bumped it up $6,000.
Okay, so actually putting on the Teller, well, separate election was only $6,000 extra from that.
Correct.
That's a pretty good deal. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on expenses?
Council expense?
Yes, sir.
Reduced from, well, current, yeah, $5,500 year-to-date, down to $1,000 next year.
We're not going to CML next year.
No, that is probably an oversight on my part. That shouldn't be that low. I can't explain it. It's an oversight on my part.
We take it personally.
Because we, huh?
We take it personally.
You should, but not for long. That should be in that same $6,500 order of magnitude, because it's very beneficial to invest in you and your education and in conferences and those things. What else on that page?
Bringing that up, though, previously, you gave us some iPads. Most of us don't use Apple products, and some of us would really like to have a PC-based pad system. Is there any way that we can have that so that we can have our computers at our table here? I mean, is this, how many computers we have here? One?
I use my iPhone.
Your iPhone, yeah. So, I mean, as part of that expense, could we get something like a Surface or one of the other family of Windows-based computers? As part of, I mean, that's one small little thing.
Well, all those one small little things are going to add up over time. If the council wants to figure out how to do that, we can do that. Something else within the O&M fund is going to get cut. It just will. I mean, we're that snug this year.
I didn't find the iPads very useful. I don't use it.
You understand that, and there are several of you that didn't, but when the council was sitting that decided they wanted them, that the council wanted them.
Quite honestly, the reason why I didn't use it was afraid of losing it and that I'd have to pay for it.
I'll take yours, Gary.
I'll take it.
Oh, it's already been given to staffers.
I find iPads very valuable for this meeting.
I'm using it.
If you use iPads, but if you don't, then it would be useful to have a PC-based, Windows-based application. And we're talking about an IT budget of $131,000. What is $200 or $300 out of $131,000 for a couple people?
I don't mean one, like paper. You're talking about cutting some poor kid's soccer balls so you can get a PC.
Okay. I'll look at that IT. Bring your own PC. Well, that's what I was going to do when you started getting.
Okay. Any other questions on legislative, administrative or municipal court?
Okay, then I'll move to the page that is planning, general support and general capital. Oh, okay. Down below, municipal court, okay, legal services, that, okay, that does reflect the prosecutor over that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on planning? Yes, sir?
Oh, sorry. That was already in the general.
Questions on planning? Okay, general support?
Again, big deviations on line 2116, employee programs expenses.
Yeah.
We've gone up from $29,000 to $56,000.
I mentioned that we, every three years, we conduct the salary survey, and that's the major part of that increase.
Okay, so in future years, that would go down to 29 or 30 or whatever.
Correct. And what I did.
Every three years, you get a little blip.
That's right. But what I did for the projections for the bond and the COP payments is I took the $21,000 and just did $7,000 each year, so that it projects out into the future, hopefully.
Okay. And then the insurance.
What line?
That would be, it would be 5100.
It went up because we didn't have a good year as it relates to property casualty and workers' comp. And so just like when you have an accident in your car, your insurance rates goes up, ours do, too. But ours are also impacted by the pool, which is made up of 250 other entities. So if they all have bad years, everybody's rates go up.
So all those floods up in Jamestown and?
They've had some effect on us, but we didn't have a good year last year from a safety perspective.
Yeah, we had a good claim ourselves, didn't we?
With the water break? Yep. So all of those have an impact.
Yeah, because even if you compare it to 2013, which you don't list here, we were substantially below that 260,000.
Correct.
And so we've gone up $100,000 in two years.
We have. And we, you know, we do our insurance through the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk and Charity Association, SERSA, and we shop. If we don't think we're getting the best deal with SERSA, we'll go someplace else. But right now, we think we're still getting the best deal with them.
Okay, so you do shop then?
Yes.
Because if they go up too much, might USAA or something.
Anything else under general support? How about general capital?
When we talk about this.
Lot of change there.
When we talk about capital.
I'm sorry?
I mean, are we going to have a special workshop on capital projects on SERSA?
You mean the three, the fleet maintenance?
Yeah.
If the council wants that, of course.
Okay.
But this is just the.
This is trash and trash capital.
Well, I don't know about that.
I wouldn't call it that, but it's not the three ma, it's not the three major projects that we.
Yeah, it's lots of little stuff.
It is.
Okay. But for instance, let me raise then the last, second to last item, 9,500.
Okay.
Use of fund balance, RLF.
Mm-hmm.
144,000 is in 2015, but there was nothing in 13 or 14 or...
Right.
Yeah. And that was one of my questions. All of a sudden, how does something really big pop up? And is that 144 going to be in 16, 17, and 18?
No. No, it's... The 144 is the cash payment that I made a reference to.
Right.
And then it's the reimbursement below that starts to repay that. And then there's also reimbursement from other funds that repay that. So, you know, I don't know what 2017 looks like. I know that 2013 and 2014, we were just, we didn't have any vehicles that were cycling in and out.
So next year, that could be zero, and we'll still have the 12.
Correct.
We might even have more in the reimbursement.
Could be, but I don't expect that.
Okay.
This is one of the things that's confused me in the past, is that it's almost like we're being double-charged for something. You said we're paying 144,000, and then the next line of 12,000 is we're paying ourselves back. Are we getting, is that paying us twice? I mean, we're paying for the original thing, and then we're paying the increments of the original thing.
Well, we are paying the increments. That's the concept.
Yeah, but that other account, RLF account, shouldn't be the general fund account. That should be the RLF account. You had like a escrow account that you established with that $30,000.
Mm-hmm.
And so when you borrow $20,000 to pay for your septic system...
Uh-huh.
You don't also, that's coming out of the $30,000. What is coming out of your annual budget payment for the septic system is that $1,000 per year.
Let me just do this for you. Flip to the next page.
Okay.
Under Parks, Buildings, and Grounds. And you'll notice at the very bottom of Parks, Buildings, and Grounds, there's a reimbursement to RLF. That 12,389 is paying the debt back to the pot from previous year's expenditures. The 144 that's in the general capital is the cash payment that then will get, being reimbursed by other things. The reimbursement to RLF that's in that line, 9505, the 12,083, I'd have to look at the RLF to see what is, what is being reimbursed back into the revenue side. Remember, we're looking at expenses now. So that 12,083, when we get to the RLF fund, I can find that and tell you what that was from a general capital. It could be that it was the chairs in this room. There was a one year where we used the RLF to buy a bunch of stuff that we're not doing that anymore.
So where is that in the revenue then? Because if we're paying ourselves back, that should be in the revenue.
It's in the... Let me get there.
Just to make sure it's there.
It's actually in the, if you look at the summary... And if you look towards the middle of the page, where it says, net adjusted revenues... No, I'm sorry, that's not it. Let me find it under, for this one. Oh, here it is. Budgeted use of revolving loan fund. It shows it as a negative because it shows it as an expense. So there isn't a revenue as such shown in the revenues because it's not, we're paying back ourselves, so it's not an actual revenue string.
But if you're showing it as an expense, but not as a revenue, you're not...
Because we're really using the money. We've really used the money to buy a piece of equipment. So 144,000 comes out as a cash payment. So that expense was made a long time ago. And so they, we just reimburse this big pot of money on an annual basis with smaller amounts of money.
But if we're talking about purely the general fund right now, 100, and we show 144,000 being paid out of that, that means there's 144,000 less that we can use.
And that shows up in this line.
Okay. But if we're just borrowing that, what we're really using is just the annual payment towards that, because the borrowing should show out as an RLF account, a separate account.
We've already, we've made, what I can tell is I need to do a better job of describing this and giving some better examples of some actual numbers here, not made-up numbers, so allow me a chance to do that.
Okay. Because that's one thing that, I mean, I'd like to think I know something about budgets, but this is one thing that...
The revolving loan fund is very tricky.
I mean, you can either borrow the money to buy these capital things and spend on interest rate, that's what he's trying to do. He's trying to borrow from ourselves. So you got to get the money from somewhere, so yeah, it's going to come from the general fund and other funds to pay that back, so we don't have to get a loan for paying for the trucks and all that stuff.
No, I understand what you're saying.
That's what that's all about.
And I would understand. I mean, like, for instance, if I borrow money from the bank, I show in my budget, not what I borrowed from the bank, I show what the annual payment is to pay off that loan.
No, because your bank is, an account's payable.
Right.
If you could do it in a budget, if you're an accountant, which I'm not, but at least I know enough to note as an account's payable, account's receivable. That's just normal accounting principles.
Right, and certainly double entry.
So I don't see anything wrong with this.
The concept is sound. I'm just not doing a good job of tracking all the different lines.
You actually had the best explanation last year. It's taking out of your savings account and moving it to your...
You have set up an escrow account, yeah.
And moving it to your checking account.
Right. And then that's two separate accounts. Here, we're talking about one account, and it's showing up twice in one account. See, I would show a deduction from my savings and a plus in my checking account. And then from that, I would, you know, make payments.
Well, he's doing a minus, he reserves.
You'd do a better job of explaining to us, so I'm like... And if the whole council doesn't want to hear it, I'm perfectly willing to get into really any good details separately, but I don't know if council... I mean, you did say you were going to brief the council, so...
If I may, David?
Sure.
I think Mr. Carlson, really the way to look at it, and you sort of touched on it, in David's analogy, we should probably have his checking account out there as well that's got $2,500 in it, to just pick a number. So we're really looking at his total pool of funds. And this is what we're talking about with the general fund. It's a total pool of funds. So where we have spent, we've made the capital outlay in a prior year, that's reduced our fund. Now, we want to replenish that fund. And again, we're still, we're just looking at one pot here, the general fund. So we wonder, if we spent 100,000 in 2013, pick a number, we want to pay that, we want to recover that and replenish our fund backed up to its historic level, then assuming in the next year we had no capital expenditures, we still want to recover by making this entry, artificially increasing our expenses by that amount that we want to recover the initial capital outlay over.
I understand.
So it'll be the same principle there with David's 32,500 in total.
Yeah.
He pays out 20,000, so now he's got 12,500 left. He gets an income, gets a salary every two weeks, which he richly deserves, but he's taking part of that salary which goes in his checking account, moving it over to his savings account, but it still comprises one big bubble of one asset that he has, cash. And this is really the principle behind that in the general fund. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, well, the problem is, you know, I think checking and savings, this is terrible thing. You build up your savings, and then you can borrow from that. I mean, it's like an escrow, if you're trying to save for a car or something like that, try to build that up. But that is separate, two separate accounts. What you've done is put them in one account under general fund.
Yes.
And so that gets a little confusing. It's like just having a checking account, no savings at all, and letting you know in the back of your mind you're letting a balance build up in the checking, and at some point, you're just writing a check against that checking, okay? But when you write that check for that 20,000 against the balance of your checking account of 30, that is a one-time payment. You, now, of course, in subsequent months, you want to start building back up. So you can say, okay, I'm setting, I'm not going to spend this money out of my regular expenses for gas and restaurants, et cetera. I'm going to set aside in my checking account money that would go towards increasing my checking account level so that I'm building that up.
That's where it was historically.
But it would be a lot more simple just to have two separate accounts, so that you know where, you have that set aside, it's harder to get to, because if it's all in your checking account, those checks go real fast. Especially with my wife. Okay. No, I wish I'd have said that. My kids, let's put it that way. So that's why I'm confused here is when you do it all in one account, it seems like you're paying for it twice. You're paying for the investment, and then you're paying again to save towards building your account back up to that.
Let us try to put some numbers to it so that we can track a specific purchase and through the whole process.
Thank you very much.
David, who does our audit?
Swan, Horst &amp; Company.
Do they agree with this procedure?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the process is not difficult. It's the explanation of it that is proven to be difficult every year.
And how it's shown in the documents.
I didn't understood it until this year.
So I am done with planning, general support, general capital, and I'm moving on to finance. Any questions there? Parks, Buildings, and Grounds?
Well, back on general capital, we had in the middle there, 9310. We had improvements to City Hall.
Uh-huh.
And we had facilities improvements.
Yep.
But then we had zeros, and but then you've shown, you know, expenses of 60. Have you broken it out separately?
That's the RLF that you're seeing zeros.
Okay, another RLF issue. I'll let it pass for now. Let me come back.
Okay. And Mayor, I'm going to answer your question now about the major differences between 2014 expenses and 2015. It's in that general capital area, and they are specifically the park and ride facility, the city match, 190,000. The sidewalk that we did on West Street or in Lyons Park, I can't remember which, but it's about 34,000. The drain that we had to do in front of City Hall, remember, we had the flooding, and so we did that, about 66,000. And then the right turn lane, it shared in our portion of that. If you add all those up, that pretty well matches the difference between the two years from an expense perspective.
Have we gotten to information systems yet?
We have not.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. So finance, I don't think there are any questions on finance. I was in Parks, Buildings, and Grounds when we went back to general capital. Any questions on Parks, Buildings, and Grounds? Information Systems?
We'll go back to Parks.
Okay.
The tree maintenance program, is that needed? Is that double the cost?
No, I can answer that. For the last several years, we hire a forester to inspect our trees, and in years past, they would inspect the trees, find the ones that are infected, and then we would hire somebody to come in and spray other trees. We have not had to spray for the last several years. So I thought, well, this year, I'm going to put it back in in case we do need to spray. We'll still do the survey and inspection. We'll see what the results are. We may not have to spray, but we haven't sprayed trees for the last several years. Beetle conditions are looking pretty good, so, but I wanted to put it back in there just in case we need to spray. So that's the difference. The difference in cost is $6,000 for the survey for the forester and an estimated 8,500 to spray trees.
And that's citywide, that's not just city property, correct?
No, that's just city property.
Oh, just city property.
Yeah. Our ordinance requires that if folks have beetle trees or hazard trees, that they remove them. And over the, and that's been in place since the 70s. It's, we, a long time anyway. We've been extremely proactive, and we've had thousands of trees removed, many on our own property. But this is, this is a preservation step. It's a protection step. But we may not have to spend it. It depends on the outcome of the survey. We've been very fortunate in years past not to have it. Okay, information systems?
Yeah, I was just wondering how many of these are kind of one-time increases and how many are constant ongoing? Because we've had some pretty hefty increases from like 45,000 up to 28,000 for the line 3539, for example.
Yeah, I would tell you that we under-budgeted in 2014 for that line. You can see that the year-end projection is 62,000. I don't know if I can tell you specifically why we under-budgeted, but again, we're pretty careful with our expenditures. But that's what we realized in 2014. It's closer to what we budgeted in 2015.
Yeah. Is this another thing, service that we compete? I know we can do it for peak internet right now, but is that something we look at every year to see if they're competitive?
I'm not going to tell you that we look at it every year.
Every year now.
But we look at it frequently.
Frequently, okay.
Yeah.
And then this last one on the page, audiovisual for council chambers at U-PCC.
The U...
I haven't seen any changes in here.
You haven't? Because they're coming tomorrow, actually. You can hear the popping in the speakers.
Yes.
We have analog equipment, believe it or not, and we're going to replace it all with digital.
Okay.
And if I say anything more, I'm beyond my league. But Wally found, he's been working with a company that will take care of this for us, and we're also going to take care of the cultural center as well.
So Wally has stepped in?
Yes. Recall that we installed the capability to stream live from the cultural center, so we had a larger room, a larger capacity room in case there is emergencies. That is what the money that was spent, part of the money that was spent for this year.
So that's why we're spending 18,970 instead of the budget at 48,000?
Correct. It's the combination of this equipment and getting the U-Pass Cultural Center ready for emergency presentations.
Right.
Anything else on information systems?
Then I'm on the page that has economic development at the top.
Any questions on economic development?
Yes? This is one that we, from 2013, there was a big spike in 14 because of the bike race and things like that.
Correct.
And so, yeah, that community events, 3321, we went budget of 65,000.
Correct.
175,000.
Right. And remember, that's what we're projecting. I think that number's going to be a little bit less. Council will recall, I did the outbrief, or Mike Breeny did the outbrief on the Pro Challenge. We acknowledged spending 152,000 at that time. When we did this first budget, we didn't have all of the numbers in from the expenses. We'll be able to fine-tune that a little bit.
Yeah, but under our charter, you're required to come to council when you're going to exceed the budget, okay? And you came to us after the event, after the charges were already made. And that's kind of like my kids when they totally blown what I sent to the paid tuition on something else, you know, asking and after the fact, can you give me now all this money? But question is, under the charter, should you have come to us the moment, I mean, you're supposed to be keeping track of each of the expense elements before you sign the contracts for things, that the moment it hits 65,000, you say, oops, we still have all these things to sign, isn't that when you should have come back to council and let us know?
Allow me the opportunity to review the charter, because I don't think I agree with your assessment, but give me an opportunity to look at that. your assessment, but give me an opportunity to look at that. What we have done historically is do a supplemental appropriation at the end of the year. You know, over the years, council has allowed certain authorities and to predict what an expense would be for every single line item would be very difficult. So, we typically...
No, we don't, and we want some flexibility, should have a contingency account, that sort of thing. The question is, how do we go from sixty-five to one hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Well, I don't think we went to one hundred and seventy-five. I think we went to one fifty-two, which is still more. No argument there.
Yeah. So, could you check into that, whether or not this is something we need to address in the revisions to our charter?
Sure.
Maybe more flexibility and that sort of thing.
Well, I don't think it's going to be a surprise when it comes to us for the supplemental appropriation.
But when you've got an annual budget and halfway through the year, you know you're going to run out of money and you know there's a spike there caused by some particular event that was at the end of the year is going to put you over, you need when that, you know that spike is going to happen, to come back and say, hey, we've had something that deviates from our projections for the budget and come forward and say, hey, we need the money for this. At the end of the year after all of this, it's done. Now, that's a question of what the charter says right there. If you could review that and let us know whether we need to approve these procedures or not. Give you a contingency account, something like that.
I, I don't believe that it, I, I'm not certain that I agree with your interpretation of the charter, but I don't think it's going to be a surprise to us. We know after the back brief, after the, the event, that it cost more than we thought it would and we're going to see, we're going to have to pay that bill.
I think the real discussion boils down to how much authority do you want to give me outside of the limits of the charter or the boundaries of the charter to spend money? Because I can tell you that there are multitude of line items where we're going to spend more. I can think of one year where we had horrific snowstorms and we spent more salt sand than what we budgeted for. I think it would be a waste of your time for me to come to you and say, hey, you know what, I need another five thousand dollars to buy a load of salt sand. I think that's what should be within my operational purview, but the real issue is what, what isn't within my operational purview? Is it ten thousand? Is it fifty thousand?
Do something like a percentage, say, if you feel it's going to go thirty percent above budget, maybe time to come to council for that or a percentage kind of thing, not a money thing.
I think we're, that's up for you to decide if you want us to pursue that, but I think you're chasing something you don't need to chase.
No.
Because we have a, we have a, one, you see all the expenses that we have and yes, they're, and most of them are going to be extremely predictable. The Pro Challenge, I think, is a bad example to set a policy on.
Well, the reason I'm picking that because you've got lots of other ones that deviate from the budget. This was a big amount and as you were signing contracts for various things, you could have said, okay, well, we're having problems with sixty-five. We should have been given the opportunity of, well, let's scale this thing down. Let's not be so gold-plating this event. I mean, we really put on a show for that.
We did.
And it was, you know, top first class, okay? And I think when we were presented the budget of sixty-five thousand, you'd say, oh, that's a, that's a good deal, okay? But if you'd given us a hundred and seventy-five thousand...
Remember what I told you that the sixty-five...
Maybe we shouldn't host this because of those kind of numbers, we can't afford future starting...
And I don't want to pick this to death, but remember that there was also a revenue stream associated with this as well.
Right.
So, the delta was ninety thousand, which was still more than the sixty-five, but it's the, if you're going to compare numbers, because I'm a stickler for that, compare the sixty-five to the ninety. So, it was twenty-five thousand over budget. Again, council gets to decide what kinds of authorities do you want to allow me to have when it comes to my discretionary management of the cost that the city incurs. That's a discussion you need to have and you need to tell me what you want me to do.
But I, I mean, the budget, the charter talks about, not line items, but they're talking about like categories and stuff.
Correct.
Accounts.
Correct.
And certainly you've done a good job apart, as far as balancing the accounts at the end of the year, or there were savings in some place and more for others. And so, you know, your total, well, we can take a look later at what the total expenses are against what was total budgeted and you've done a reasonable job there, so.
Bob, so if I look at revenues for community events, I have sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, it's not, if you're looking at one hundred and seventy-five, that, that's take away the sixty-seven, then that's...
Is the concern basically, I think maybe the concern is, is that if something goes over budget dramatically, should we be concerned about, do we have enough funds to cover that for the rest of the year? And I think that may be the discussion you might want to have. For instance, if it goes over three hundred thousand, for instance, and our general fund only has two hundred thousand dollars left in it, we're going to be out of money at the end of the year. That's the only concern, I think.
From the line items that are within this budget?
No, if something goes over as much as you suggest.
I understand that. It would have to go over seven hundred thousand dollars and if that's going to happen, it's going to be a catastrophic event.
And we'll probably know about it.
The system, the system does police itself.
Dave, I've got a question on the first line, actually the second line, salaries and wages permanent, budget up to one thirteen from eighty-two. Is that a reflection of the part-time, of the full-time person for Main Street?
Correct.
So, in future years, that number will go down beyond, after 2015 in your spreadsheet?
No, it stays just like this.
So, that's a permanent position?
Could be. At council's discretion. You've talked about funding a Main Street coordinator?
We did it for like one or two years.
We've never done it.
What?
We've never funded a Main Street coordinator.
Okay, they withdraw it then or something?
No, we've never had a Main Street program, so there's never been a Main Street coordinator.
No, but this last year, we authorized ten thousand.
For Main, for the program. This is for a person to do the program.
Well, I thought that was part of the cost of the program, is the coordinator.
No, it was part of our submission fees.
Correct. That was within that ten thousand. So, this would be an employee that would manage that Main Street program. The, you know, the concept is there then could be other revenue streams that would be associated with that. So, no, in my projections for the out-years, I kept a half-time person there.
And we don't know how long that's going to go. I mean, as Main Street matures, it may be a possibility at some time, you may not need that.
Dave, can you remind me why we're saying zero for community events? We know we're going to have community events.
That's true and, oh, well, that, that community event that's there was the Pro Challenge.
No, I understand that one. Why are we budgeting zero?
Because I don't know if we're going to have the Pro Challenge or not. I don't, I don't have a revenue stream associated with that event.
You won't have it in 2015 for sure, right? We wouldn't have the event until sixteen or is that right?
No, we don't know that yet. We don't, we haven't been invited to participate, but what I, I haven't shown an expense for Pro Challenge, should we choose to do it, nor have I shown revenues. So, I, we haven't been invited to participate.
But those are, those are things that we can decide to do or not do depending on what resources are available at the time.
Correct. The reason that it showed up in the 2014 budget is because we received the invitation in 2013 and we had time to list some numbers.
That mine is just strictly for, why can't we just call it Pro Challenge then? Community events to me is broader than just one event.
We can certainly do that.
So, I, I mean, to be safe, I mean, obviously, we don't have to use the money. We can put it there just to budget it.
We have other, other, I do community events. Friends Creative Arts is going to have community events and we're compensating them to some degree to help with that. And also Main Street's going to have community events as well. So, there's funding in there for that as well.
And we list those as separate things. You're right, that line was solely for the Pro Challenge, but in future years, it could be for something else.
Which obviously, we haven't budgeted for anything.
Correct.
Actually, we do have special events in legislative and the operating, our fireworks for the Fourth, Fifth, and December, the Mayor's Cup, and then July Fifth Symphony.
So, may, maybe for a clarification, you should put Pro Challenge right there, just so we know that that was strictly for that one event.
Or other community events, something like that.
We have costs for other community events in streets too and things like that.
And I see that everywhere else. Come out, everybody. That's other places. I understand your point. I got it. Moving on. Thank you.
Is there not a Pro Challenge meeting coming up here shortly?
Yes, sir. October twenty-second. I'll be going to that outbrief as will Mike Breney and Brian and Locke Pierce, who is the technical director.
So, we may be a little smarter after that meeting.
We're going to be, we're already tons smarter.
We're not.
Sir.
If you're going to that meeting, I had heard some rumors that it could still start at one hundred and forty-seven.
I've heard all kinds of rumors, so we'll, hopefully, we'll find out something on the twenty-second.
Great.
And what, what I will tell you is that I'm getting a mixed bag of feedback from the community. It's really all over the map and before I commit the city to doing it again, we'll bring it before the council in a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I mean, I've already addressed to you an email from a concerned citizen on some of the expenses we incurred for that.
Uh huh.
And we have to address that separately.
Right.
But, you know, that's the kind of thing we need to be careful of. People, our citizens are rightfully looking at what we're writing checks for.
I'm glad they are.
Were you at the outbrief? I can't recall.
No, I was here when they briefed it.
Okay.
Anything else on economic development? How about the cultural center? Okay? Then let's slide over to the next page, which is police operations. Questions there?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment in line one hundred, two-twenty-one dash twenty-two twelve, custody of prisoners. Two thousand and fourteen, we budgeted four thousand dollars and by the end of the year, we project to spend nearly fifteen thousand and we've also budgeted fifteen thousand for two thousand and fifteen. And I asked David about this earlier, and this is to cover the increased expenses of drug testing, correct?
Driving under the influence of marijuana and methamphetamines, both. The cost for drug testing are significantly higher than the trust, the cost for alcohol testing. So, we're seeing a shift in comparative driving to more drug-driving offenses. Part of it too is that the district attorney's office is more willing to prosecute those offenses as the officer's skills get better and the testing processes get better. But the big thing is, you can do an alcohol test for about a hundred bucks, a drug test for the confirmation runs about two to five hundred dollars, depending on how many confirmations because they have to be done by a board-certified toxicologist.
Chief, what's the timeframe that you get your results back relative alcohol test, marijuana test?
We're talking chemical tests now. If you do an alcohol test with an intoxicilizer, you get it right then. If you do it with a blood test, it comes back in about a month, depending upon the speed that the lab processes it. It can be done faster, but that's typically what it takes. On marijuana tests right now, there's only a couple of companies in the state that are doing them and so they're fairly slow. It's thirty to sixty days and you get a preliminary test for twenty-five dollars and then you do confirmations for each suspected type of substance. So, if you're looking at marijuana and stimulant and a depressant, you're going to get three confirmations. It's going to run us about six hundred and twenty-five dollars, excuse me, yeah, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for that one. If you only suspect marijuana, you get one confirmation, it's going to be a two-hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, it depends on what the officer's detecting in terms of the kind of impairment the person has and the number of tests.
Still have to wait at least thirty days for the results.
Yeah, sometimes more, sometimes less. There's a possibility the state may begin subsidizing some of these costs in the middle of next year, but what the legislation says is that CBI will start doing them in addition to the private companies, but they may charge a fee. We haven't got any idea yet of a proposal on fees, so I have to budget for what we're doing now.
Sure.
It may go up or go down. Sure.
Chief, what was the increase in, for line seventy-one oh seven, medical expenses? Now budgeting five thousand, is that a new expense?
Those expenses involve forensic medical exams of sexual assault victims that we now have to pay for. Even if the person doesn't wish to file charges, but they want to have the crime investigated, state law requires us to perform the investigation and pay for it. There's also been a court decision, courts used to say that a person in custody, meaning a prisoner in a jail, is entitled to medical expenses paid for by the law enforcement agency. Now, it also covers a person under arrest. So, if we have a guy who's been in a traffic accident and he's under arrest and he's injured, we initially get billed for those expenses. Car insurance may pay some of it later, it may not, but we have to pay if nobody else does and the Supreme Court has said we have to and that's just the way it is.
Thanks.
It's unfortunate.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Under the miscellaneous police supplies, radars, all that kind of stuff, have we considered or the police department considered having the cameras on the officers?
We have and you and I are going to be talking about that later.
This meeting that I'm on with you?
Pardon?
Is this the committee I'm on with you or something?
Yes, and we have about twenty-five hundred dollars there. Right now, we have three cameras. The school district gave us two. We purchased one to see how they work, test it, and I'm going to try and buy a few more. The cost has gone up. They were about three hundred. They're going to run about four and a half now for the same camera. We've got about twenty-five hundred dollars in that fund and it'll be a meeting with you, me, and representative from the district attorney's office and we'll vote on whether I can expend those, that money for that. Now, that money would be gone at that point. That won't equip every officer, so sometime in a future year, I'll come back and include that in the general budget.
Well, every officer isn't on duty all the time. I mean, whoever's doing the patrols can have it on them or the ones that are off duty.
Well, because there's legal issues that make that less comfortable than it sounds.
Okay, well, we can talk about it then. But certainly after what I've heard about Pueblo and some of the other cities around here where they, they do have it, I mean, for instance, the case where you, your officers was accused of overreacting on a domestic thing.
We had a camera that day.
That was really good to have. And so, yeah, I would like to be able to support, you know, that kind of thing.
I would too.
So, then the other question I had was on the overtime pay, line thirteen hundred, I think it is. Anyway, it's, it's budgeted for ninety thousand and you're anticipating spending two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty.
Sure. For some reason, now, the salary line items are not prepared by the police department. In two thousand and fourteen, they were prepared by the finance director.
Right.
And for some reason, she dropped our overtime amount from about two hundred and twelve the prior year to ninety. I'm not sure why.
I guess I should have cut that last year.
I understand.
And we've also had some turnover and you, so you'll notice that the full-time has dropped some and we compensate for that with the overtime and that just costs us more.
Just a quick question to go back, point of information on the marijuana arrest. It takes thirty to sixty days. Are these drivers free to be driving around that whole time?
Generally, yes.
Great.
Thank you. The state has up to eighteen months to prosecute the case, so if they agree to a chemical test, they're generally free to drive for up to a year and a half before it's resolved.
What's the difference between that and an alcohol violation?
Well, an alcohol violation works the same way. We get a result faster, but the trials can take just as long.
And we don't take their license so they can still drive?
Their license is only taken immediately if they refuse a test. Then there's a civil process that can suspend their license. That can happen as quickly as six weeks or it can take months. It really depends on the scheduling of the courts and agencies that do it rather than us.
I didn't mean to get us off topic there, but I just felt it was a good opportunity to hear that.
Thank you.
But there is a recent Supreme Court case that says you can confiscate property and so could you confiscate their car?
No.
Why not?
Because there's other court cases that say we can't. It's a long explanation that we could do away from the council meeting. I'd be happy to talk to you about it, but...
Probably when we have that meeting on other, other property, we've confiscated.
You bet.
So, chief, we're hiring two officers. Is that, have we budgeted for that here?
They're budgeted in last year's budget as well as in this year's budget. We're filling vacancies.
Great. Thank you.
But the budget for this year is twenty percent less than last year. It's on a declining slope by twenty percent per year, right?
You're talking...
I mean, talking about the school resource officer.
Right.
Oh.
I wasn't, one of the officers is not a school resource officer and the two vacancies are just two officers, not two school resource officers.
So, were you talking about school resource officers or just officers in general?
Officers in general.
Right. We have two vacancies that we're filling, but yes, our school resource officer, the second one, is being incrementally paid for more each year by the school district and that's all accounted.
And ours is going down.
Correct.
That's not the two that I'm filling though.
Correct. They already exist.
So, in theory, if two more officers are added, the overtime pay would go down, correct?
And then probably not too much at first.
Okay.
Eventually it would.
And then can that, if we do, David, if, if that does go down, can that go to miscellaneous, And then can that, if we do, David, if, if that does go down, can that go to miscellaneous, can that be moved over there to help them buy more cameras?
Sure.
And more radios?
Yeah, but we'll have to see how that goes.
Okay.
Initially, when people are hired, we have to go through generally legally accepted training programs.
Right.
Depending on the officer's experience, they take between four to sixteen weeks, and while they're working with another officer, they accomplish about the work of a half an officer for the first few months.
Okay.
And towards the end of it, they get to the point of accomplishing about the amount of one officer with two FTEs until that person's free to work on their own, and then they start to be a little bit more productive. So during that first part, overtime expenses probably don't.
Flatline.
Don't improve.
Right, but I'm just looking for an opportunity here to get you what you need.
Well, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure I was honest with you.
Fair enough.
Chief, I've got one more question. Relative to that overtime, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, if we add two, but we're not going to save any overtime, what if we added four?
Mm-hmm.
And take that money and save it from the overtime? Doesn't that make sense? So we have two more officers that we can pay whatever, would that not save us on overtime and have more availability for you?
It saves some. It also depends on when the overtime happens. So for instance, if we add two more guys, that would allow us to add, say, one to half the midnight shift and one to half the swing shift, a team that works the first part of the week and a team that works the second part of the week. It just depends on when the overtime occurs. It might, there'd be some general overtime reduction, but there's others that just are based on when somebody does something bad.
I understand.
And it also has a trickle effect on equipment as well.
Yeah.
If you add people, then you're going to, you add equipment, weapons, vehicles, et cetera.
Hiring an officer, for instance, the initial uniform cost is about twenty-five hundred dollars. By the time you buy vests and duty belts and clothes and boots and.
Question about overtime. If an officer is working overtime, is he getting one and a half times normal pay or some other factor?
One and a half.
One and a half, okay.
But his benefits don't go up?
No.
Like, so, health insurance, I mean, the twenty-two percent overhead is not applied to that.
Correct.
Other questions on the police operations?
Question about school resource officers. I was surprised by the eight thousand dollar number here, and you probably don't understand it. There are two identified SROs now, and are they both working with schools?
Yes.
Are they available whenever schools are in session? Or is it some other schedule? And I realize they can be called away for emergencies. So are they there when schools are in session?
Yes, sir.
Full-time, I mean?
Yes.
All right.
They start a few minutes early directing traffic at one of the schools before the session starts. It's about fifteen minutes before school, and then they work through the rest of the school day.
Okay, the school district is paying how much now? Is that their pay?
In twenty fifteen, in twenty fifteen, and I may have to check on that for you, twenty fifteen, we're paying for one fully, which is what we've always done, and in twenty, let's see, in twenty fourteen, we paid for all but, I think, eight thousand dollars, and I think in twenty fifteen, it's all but twelve thousand, and then it ramps up. You know what, I have that information for you, I'm sorry.
I think we budgeted sixty thousand, and then it was down twenty percent every year, which would be twelve thousand.
Okay, exactly. In twenty fourteen, we paid for both. In twenty fifteen, we paid for one and eighty percent of the second. In twenty sixteen, we're paying for one and half of the second, and in twenty seventeen, we're paying for one and twenty percent of the second, and that's the ratio that will exist.
Okay.
On into the future.
May I add something else?
Of course.
The eight thousand that's in this general operating budget is not the officer's wages.
Right.
Those are program expenses.
Oh.
For what the officers do.
All right, I didn't understand that.
Sure.
And chief, they're full-time officers, school's in session for nine months, what do they do the other three months?
They do two things. They help cover vacations, and they work regular patrol while they're doing that. They also have certain state mandated and school mandated trains, as well as things that we do for best practices, keep our insurance in order. The school resource officer associations try to schedule those things in the summer so as not to interfere with the SRO's class time. There's also some federal stuff, and they just do it whenever they want to, and it frequently does get in the way of class time, but we try to get the training done in the summer, vacations for them done in the summer, not during the school year, and they fill in while other people take vacation.
Well, they do have summer school. Are they there for that?
We generally don't have an SRO over there for summer school. We just have patrol officers respond.
Now, we had budgeted sixty thousand in two thousand and fourteen for the SRO, but he wasn't hired until well beyond mid-year. Are we only being charged for the actual time he was used as an SRO? In other words, if he only worked half the year as an SRO, are we charging only thirty thousand instead of the sixty thousand that was budgeted?
I don't think I understand your question, sorry.
When was Ken Anderson hired?
Your call? No, I have to look it up.
See, he's been here a year, so it.
Yeah, but that was the first SRO, which we paid.
No, that was the second SRO.
That's the second SRO?
We've, we've had an SRO for years.
Right.
The second one was hired, my recollection is, at the tail end of thirteen.
No, I couldn't give you the exact date, but.
I don't think so.
He bought his equipment December of thirteen, his bullet fruit vest, because I just submitted the reimbursement for that.
So he started, he went through the training, because I recall him not being available as an SRO because he was doing SRO training.
Mm-hmm.
And he didn't, that's true, and he went through the entire summer with his training, and then started the twenty-fourteenth school year as the second SRO. So he was still on staff.
Okay, but when we went to Northcom, you were in the middle of just trying to hire an SRO. That was back in May, I think. So he wasn't on board in May, I don't think.
I don't recall that.
So.
But what's, what's the fundamental question?
The question is, is if you didn't even, I mean, we budgeted for an SRO for the full year, but if we only got him on board.
We've been running two to three officers short for the whole year.
Okay, but the deal with the, the school, though, is that they're going to pay eighty percent of the second year, which I guess is.
Next year.
Twenty percent of the second year, which is the first year. I guess we'll have a second SRO full-time basically in the second.
Correct, twenty fifteen.
And so that fourteen is probably reflected in the actual man-hours that you have to use and stuff like that.
Correct.
Okay, and since it was, it was fully funded by us anyway.
Right.
It doesn't matter whether he worked half the year or full year or something like that.
Correct.
Okay, I'm trying to get my handles right.
I got it.
Thank you.
Anything else on police? Public Works, Public Works Admin. Questions there?
I guess we can ask about the contract services. That seems like.
I'm sorry?
The contract services seem to be a huge jump.
Bill, would you speak to?
Yep, absolutely. Well, you know, our development and work has started to uptick here in the community, and so our need for plat review and other review services from our on-call services has stepped up from this last year. In two thousand and fourteen, we've had to add money onto the contract to procure additional services from them to fulfill the needs, so.
Describe what they do, from drainage design to plan review, that kind of thing.
That line item includes three things, the on-call engineer services, our weather services, and miscellaneous support. The on-call engineer, we hire to do anything and everything that we can't cover ourselves. Either we're not technically, or we don't have the, the time and manpower to do. They'll do development reviews, plat reviews as such. We had them design the sidewalk on West Street. We had them do the, some drainage designs for us and things like that, traffic work, any kind of that miscellaneous work, on-call work, that we can't cover ourselves.
So these are typically small projects. When we do a design for FEMA, for the FEMA project, we bid all that out. That's it, those would be huge design costs. These are almost emergency services that are provided, and they're generally relatively small for the design effort. For example, the drainage design out fund, I think, was six thousand bucks, something like that. We do compete for the on-call service provider every three to five years or so.
We just finished that.
Yeah.
Just selected the next one.
Does that answer your question about that?
Yeah, I was just curious. You know, I, I'm thinking about the streets and stuff, and when I first came on council, we were talking about this mapping program to map out Woodland Park, and did we ever do that?
Pavement management system?
Well, G I S. G I S, yeah.
We have a.
I remember talking about that after that, do we?
This contract includes capabilities to provide G I S services, but we have not done any work in two thousand and fourteen to expand our G I S services, other than what our utilities technician does to keep track of the databases that we all currently have.
Okay.
So we have a fledgling G I S system. We can do plat maps, we know water, we know some wastewater, some zoning.
Just a big discussion when I came on to council, and then, so, I didn't know if you still wanted it.
We do, it's just.
We do.
Just not feasible at the moment, currently.
But does that sixty thousand go from fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nine? Is that, or is that a peak?
It stays the same. It actually, yes, it stays the same. Other questions on Public Works? Right. Fleet maintenance at the top, at the top of the next page? Questions there?
Have we reflected the possibility of starting the construction on the fleet maintenance facility next year, and what will impact will that have on being able to do the work in the building while it's under construction?
There's one line item in here.
Yes.
There's one line item, and that is building maintenance, one hundred and three-three-two twenty-three-twenty, where I had a one-time expense of two thousand dollars to relocate one of our lifts to the Public Works facility, anticipating that we'd be displaced from the current facility and need to replicate that, that ability in the Public Works facility.
Okay, so you're going to use our new, relatively new Public Works building to do some of the maintenance, and I interrupt that?
That's our plan.
Okay. Anything else on fleet? Okay, how about street operations?
When, when we do get to cost sharing the fleet maintenance facility under the capital investment, the number, the numbers that were, you know, spending for, for things like from twenty-three thirty, or, or twenty-four twenty, all went down, you know, for each of those departments. Is that going to change the formula at all? When, does it change it year to year as far as the mix between the, the water treatment vehicles, the police vehicles, the road vehicles, that sort of thing, where we do these cost sharing between those various accounts?
I won't change the, the percentages. I'm sure the work effort does change year to year, but the, the percentages that we use to determine the distribution of the debt service was based on our fleet, our fleet crew chief, if you will, working with Bill to come up with a general average over the course. So it's not necessarily the dollars.
Year to year, then.
It's not necessarily the dollars spent, it's the time spent on each of those different operations.
Yeah, well, dollars usually are.
Not necessarily. If you look at this, the twenty-four twenty, there's a, it was forty-two thousand, and it went to fifteen, that was because we didn't buy loader tires. The next year, it bumped up to thirty-one thousand. Loader tires are twenty-eight thousand, so we, it, it didn't increase that much work effort, it just was the, the product itself.
Right.
So we've done it based on level of effort rather than money spent.
Okay.
Anything else on fleet? Okay, how about parks and rec?
This is where I brought to our attention earlier the revenues versus the expenses.
Okay.
Because the year in projection is two, two eighty-six, seven hundred.
Okay.
If we could try to keep at that level what we actually spent fourteen, you know, plus maybe some inflation, for fifteen, that would get us more in line with, you know, getting the payback. Now, this, of course, is absent any kind of review of, you know, like a test audit or something like that, but, I mean, one idea, for instance, is to, to have each of the sports have their own leagues, the baseball league, and they would provide their own umpires and everything else. You know, in other words, there's a question of, is there some way of managing this that would, would bring the, the cost of, of running this program more reasonable, the expenses? So I, that's why I'm bringing up the question. Right now, we're only getting, like I said, a forty-five percent recovery rate on, on this, this program, and I don't want to increase the fees, although I do note that probably a majority of the, the kids that are in these leagues are from outside of the city of Woodland Park, but that's another benefit we provide to the entire county, which we don't always get credit for. But I, I, I would, I'm just looking to see if there, if there's any way that we can keep our expenses down to what we're projecting in two thousand and fourteen.
For the va, you've got a bunch of questions there. I'll do my best to address them. The, the county, folks outside of, Wally, would you grab your stuff and come sit down? I'm tired of watching your legs cramp.
Thank you.
So come, sit up here, make yourself comfortable, make me nervous. And I'm sorry it took an hour and a half to get there. The county, folks who live outside of the city limits, pay more to participate.
Okay.
For the most part, the monies that come in from a fee structure pay for the services. So when you have a small park and rec department, we have three full-time employees, plus we have several site supervisors that we pay ten bucks an hour. So when you have a smaller department, your overhead is higher. So that's one of the reasons why our percentages is out of whack, because we have a park and rec director, we have Judy, whose title is.
Ed.
And then we have Ryan, who is.
Sports coordinator.
Sports coordinator. So it takes those three people to run the shop. There's a lot of overhead associated with that. So if you, if you forget the overhead and you strictly look at revenue in, it pays for the expenses associated with the different programs.
Okay.
We have tons of volunteers that help in the program, coaches, all those kinds of things that don't get paid a thing.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, is are we taking advantage of having volunteers do a lot of that?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions on parks and rec?
Cindy, on the recreation programs, it increased by about twenty percent. Any, something new there?
From the ninety-four thousand to the hundred and four thousand.
Excuse me, from the twenty-seven thousand to the thirty-three thousand.
Like I said.
Twenty-two seventy.
Well, for the recreation programs in general, you can see that in the twenty-fourteen, we're not meeting our projected revenues, but we're hoping to increase for twenty-fourteen. Expected revenues in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're analyzing our programs and doing a survey of our community to find out what we can provide in programs that they would like.
So possible new programs that aren't included here.
Other park and rec questions?
What, we'll take soccer, for example. What's this?
Why would that be?
I don't know. I wonder why. Sixteen thousand is going, I see twenty coming in, sixteen going out, is that, what is that for refs, shirts, trophies, what is that?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I answered my own question. So and that's really what our, our budget cost is, but I see the money coming in, so it's almost like the extra costs are just for administrative. It seems like the individual sports are paying for themselves.
Yeah, if you look at the line items comparable to revenues to, we are recovering our program direct expenses, it's the administration fees that we're not recovering a hundred percent of.
What's our goal, though, Cindy?
A hundred and twenty percent, a hundred direct, twenty direct.
So that's why the revenue stream from soccer is slightly higher than the, the expenses, is what I like.
Okay.
Cindy, what program offers the most participation?
I would say soccer, and the reason why you see that is because it's going to go through twelve grades. They're, they all pretty much run the same baseball, it's pretty similar to the soccer program, because we offer those same initiatives.
Ballpark number, couple three hundred?
Right now, soccer's about almost four hundred.
Wow.
Sorry, mayor.
Yeah, good for you.
Baseball's.
There's more kids on a team in soccer. That's the, that's the reason.
Baseball's right behind you, though.
Good for them.
Well, football, is it worth having a, a league if you're only spending sixteen hundred dollars on it? I mean, has.
You need to ask the kids, I absolutely.
Well, I thought that was, they, they, the, the folks that did, did football just basically pulled out and are going down to the springs or something like that? Do we have an active football thing left?
We do, we often play football. Uh, we do. We often play football. We offer that in the spring, and it's a theater program into the Panther Club.
Okay, so it's the, the younger kids, then?
Yeah.
Look, I mean, the fees are 2,000, so it's paying for itself.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
We do the same with hockey.
Okay.
Sure.
Sir, I'd like to request that we have a break for a little bit before we go to the next tab.
I think that's a great idea. Um, is 25 after? Is, is 10 minutes too much?
No. Well, I may, I don't know what everybody else needs.
Let's try to reconvene at 25 till 10. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, you've not dealt with this before, but if we go past 11, we need the council's permission to do that.
We all have.
So that's good.
There's some punchlines there, but I won't do it.
Along with the street people and the bag lady, there's gotta be something about this. So we had no deficits this last year because you didn't spend any money. Uh, so any, any questions on the general fund before we move on to what's on the schedule to grants? The grant funds in a nutshell, money comes in, money goes out. We match it, we move along with life. But we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about the grants.
When you say money comes in and money goes out, um, I'm looking at some of this stuff.
Okay.
Give me an example, like Fountain Creek improvements, it looks like. So we've got that money and we just put it right into improvements. And that's not budgeted? How is, how is that?
So if you're on the, you're behind the two ten tabs, you're looking at intergovernmental grant fund revenues.
Yes.
And the FEMA project, um, you there in 2014, there was a year in projection of 522. And again, this is revenue and then a city share component. So if you look at the next page, for expenses, under FEMA project, you'll see that the expenses, the 696291, matches the revenue of both the grain tour and the city share. That's what I mean when I say money comes in, money goes out.
It's a wash, right?
It's a wash.
Everything on the second page equals everything on the first page.
Not exactly. There's one that does not.
And which one is that?
Isn't that the Build a Generation program?
Uh, well, yes, that's true. And the, um, well, yes and no. The Build a Generation, the, the, the revenue, you see it says city share. Historically, the Build, in its initial stages in 1999, the Build a Generation program was fully funded at the state level. The city agreed to provide a place and equipment. Over the years, that, that shift has changed and it's become more of a city responsibility. Last year, 2014, we had probably 50 or so thousand dollars, maybe 60, grant monies that augmented the city share. Today, none of those funds have been made available. So it's our, our proposal to you in the budget that the city pay entirely for the Build a Generation coordinator, except for, there's $5,000 of revenue from snacks and miscellaneous revenue, which is usually contributions. Yes, sir.
Does that explain back into expenditure side of things? Uh, under administration, the last line of them says a 9290, North Teller BAG funding match.
Yes.
We had 68,000 in the budget. We're spending 68, 347. But next year, you want to collect 112 or expend 112, 793. Now, when comparing those numbers against the, the grants here, they don't match.
It does. Uh, if you look at, so let's make sure we're all on the same sheets of music here. The one page that I'm looking at is the general fund expenditures. It's the page that at the top it says legislative. But in the administration portion, it says North Teller Bag Funding Match.
Right.
And for the 2615 budget, that's 112, 793. And if you look at the, the revenue, the city share to pay that is 112, 793.
Under, oh, under the, the revenue part.
In, in the, in the grant fund. So the city is, is acting as the match.
Well, the grant fund.
And if you look at the.
Says 117, 793.
But if you, are you looking at the expenditure or the revenue?
Expenditures.
So if you flip back one page to the revenue where it says.
Okay.
Bag, you see the total revenue is 117, 793.
Okay, then the 3,000 and the 2,000.
Correct.
Okay, but the question is, are we adding an employee? I mean, going from one to two or?
No.
Because we're doubling the salaries there.
That's because we had the, the other components of that were grants from other entities. So no, we're not, we're not increasing.
So as the grants decrease, the city share has to go up.
In this case, that is true.
Because we want to keep at least one person there.
We find that the program is in the process of valuable for the community.
Right.
So we will continue to get that grant every year? Or we have to request it?
No, that, it, the grant is coming from us.
Okay, so.
Historically, we have gotten grants from CDO, believe it or not, Seatbelt Awareness. We've gotten grants from Department of Justice over the years to augment the Build a Generation coordinator's salary. Today, there are no grant opportunities that we've been able to take advantage of to augment the city share. We think that it's a valuable enough program and process that the city would pay for it all. We will continue to look for offsetting dollars to save the city money. With me?
But meantime, can we cut expenses like travel and training? $6,000 for travel and training?
Perhaps. I don't know what that 6,000 would be for. Generally, those are funds that are grant funded. I don't know exactly what this one is for. I'll be honest with you.
We'll look into that.
We'll find out.
Okay, great.
Anything else?
So again, the grants, it's basically an in and out account and there's city matches associated with it, as you're familiar with. Okay?
Okay.
Nothing else on grants, then let's take a look at debt service funds, specifically the Drainage Debt Service Fund, 330. So I'm, I'm way at the, back in the tab that says 330 Drainage Debt Service Fund. And both revenues and expenses are on that page. Council will recall that the Drainage Debt Service was incurred in 1998 or 1999 with about $2 million of improvements done on Fountain Creek and all around town. You may recall in some earlier discussions that I told you that the revenue stream that was predicted in 1998 or 1999 to service that debt was way over, overestimated. That revenue stream did not materialize. So the 410 fund historically has augmented the Drainage Debt Service Fund, absolutely legal. Last year, though, we had significant capital projects, Charis Bible College, huge amount of drainage funds. The apartment complex, huge amount of drainage funds. So in 2014, we didn't have to augment the drainage fund with 410. 2015, the story's the same. So we don't have to augment them with 410. So the, the Drainage Fund is basically paying for itself this year. Any questions on that?
Just in 98, 99, what was the thought on revenues and why didn't that happen?
In, in 1998, 99, we were still experiencing significant growth patterns. We were building 50, 60 homes a year. And so the thought was that with that, with the rooftops would come additional retail, which would generate additional revenue for capital fees and for the monthly user fee. That didn't happen. But the improvements that were made were significant and, and there were one major project and then many smaller projects all around town. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I can see to understand reason why having, uh, separate funds for separate monies that we collect when somebody builds something. My question is, this last year, we have, we have transportation impact fees that we charge everybody too.
Transportation capital fees.
Capital fees. And when it came to doing the Sheridan deceleration money, you said we'll use, to the extent possible, that transportation capital fees and then supplement it with 410 funds. But we don't have in a sense of an account that shows that accounting of how much has been collected over the years and that. You have it somewhere in the bowels of, of the computers here. But I was wondering why we don't have a separate account that shows the transportation impact fees? Since that's a separately collected fee for a specific purpose.
You know, we don't, we don't do, we don't have a separate debt service fund. Remember, this is the debt service fund for the drainage. There is no transportation capital fee debt service fund to connect it to. We collect park capital fees as well. We don't have an account for that because it's counted in the revenue stream. And that's where the transportation capital fees are as well, is within the revenue stream. When we get to 410, I'll show you.
Okay.
So any questions on drainage debt service? Okay?
Are we going to go over 210 and 215 or?
Uh, we're going to do 215 at the next meeting, which is the DDA fund.
Okay.
And 210, we just did, was the grant funds.
Oh, sorry. I'm just, yeah, the DDA fund and the.
We'll do the DDA next time.
Okay.
Is, is the plan. You can deviate from that if you want to.
No.
Then the Fund 340 is the COP debt service. Remember, we entered into the COPs in 1998, Public Works and Police Operations Center. And there's, you see the revenues at the top from a variety of, of funds. And then the expenditures at the bottom. And of course, it's a debt service, so the revenues match the expenditures. And if we move forward with the fleet maintenance and the park, that, all those numbers will change based on the reissuance of the certificates of participation.
And you, you rounded these numbers off to 300,000 in that, those calculations? It's a 290 or 272 or?
Something like that. It was 272, but remember the 272, that was just the general fund piece. Remember, in, in the whole concept of COPs and the bonds, the weak link or the limiting fund is the general fund. That's why I focused on it. But again, at the top of that page, you see the general fund is the 272, 243.
Yeah, that would go to 313.
Wonderful. Okay, so let's see, what's next? Uh, then the last is the street fund, 410. So in keeping with how we did the general fund, I'm going to ask you to go back to behind the budget message and find the 410 summary. It's on page Z as in zebra. And remember that this summary, for all practical purposes, follows the exact same format as the general fund summary. The 410 fund is extremely healthy. It has been in the last seven or eight years, which is why we've been able to focus on our local streets so heavily. It's another reason why we're going to be able to pay quite a bit down on our COPs and our bond. But again, this doesn't reflect those projects. It simply reflects our normal approach to street capital improvements. Any questions on the summary? We'll go to the details here in just a couple of minutes. Good. And let's flip back to the tab that is the 410 street fund. I can speak to revenues. Bill can address expenses. What questions do you have?
I have questions on the expenses.
Okay.
Uh, first one under capital outline, 1116. We had budgeted 505,000. And that was before basically the, the resurfacing, the chip seal, that sort of thing. The bids on that were a little over 300,000. Okay? In other words, they're about a 30% less than what we thought it was going to cost. Okay? Uh, now, subsequent to that, there was, it's some emergency improvements down near Safeway that, that brought that number up to 456 for expenditures. So there's a. But when we're calculating the future, like in 2015, if you took the numbers from a pavement management plan, which should be what we're following, those are the streets that need to be done every year. We don't need to do things before they get to the, uh, the point where they need to be fixed. We should be, one, reflecting what are the bid amounts that we've been getting recently as opposed to what was in the steady? Because those unit prices that were in the steady are significantly, like I'm saying, proposing 30% higher than what we're actually getting in the bids. So when you're talking about 2015 and beyond, if we're just sticking on the, to the pavement plan, management plan that says we're going to do this much in each of those years, square foot wise, we need to reuse the best, latest, uh, prices from the bids that we've been getting. Now, you can add inflation factor to that for the future, but we shouldn't continue to use numbers that are not reflected in our bids that we've been getting the last year and this year. So that was one of my comments is that, and if you take the amount that was scheduled to be done in 2015 from the pavement management plan, it's much less than that 505,000.
Bill, could you speak to the, um, what was budgeted in 2014, what was accomplished in 2014? And then your logic behind the 2015 amount?
Yeah, this year was particularly competitive, but realizing that the pavement work is very dependent on the price of oil. And the prices fluctuate, can fluctuate tremendously. And I just met with our chip seal contractor just yesterday to talk about pricing. Um, so this year, prices came in pretty good and we were able to, uh, to do some additional streets that, realizing that the pavement management plan was a, a plan that was done for a five-year period um, based on some assessment notice. But we have to each year do some on-the-ground common sense assessment too, and sometimes streets degrade faster than what the model might say. And that's what we're seeing in this year. So I estimate with a conservative price of oil, because we never know exactly what it's going to do. And, uh, so this year, we're basing our streets, uh, for chip sealing, based on the pavement management plan. But we have two streets that have come up that need to be, um, more than resurfaced and we need to rebuild them. So there's some additional costs there because they've just degraded fast, those two streets degraded faster than the mathematical model said it would. And we've also included this year some costs because in anticipation of the Memorial Park project going on and that construction, the opportunity to leverage that work and tie in with repaving and fixing some drainage on the alley behind City Hall. So that money's been included in there.
So of that 505, my notes said that we were going to do 365K.
365 in chip seal, 100,000 in reconstruction and $40,000 in the City Hall alley.
Right.
Again, those are my best guess estimates, months, almost a year out, of what contract prices might come in at.
Okay, but for the last two years, they've come in a lot lower than what we'd estimated. And so the trend is that they tend to be lower. Uh, but yeah, you can talk to the chip seal guy on.
I did.
Prices. Yeah.
And so.
But when you're talking about out years, uh, we need to, you know, pretty much stick to the pavement management plan.
Well, we are. That's drives, that's driving everything here because we updated the pavement management plan. And David and I said, this is what we think we can afford each year. And that's what drove the pavement management plan, was a budget number. And that's what they broke things out by is, okay, these are the streets that, that you need to do with this strategy, with this treatment. And our estimate is that's what it's going to cost, your budget number. And if, if we can do, do a few more, that's a good thing. Or we save money. I, I don't see what's wrong with saving money and spending less than what we budgeted. So.
We typically, our thinking was about 400,000 a year. Some years it was, my recollection, it went as high as 600 and some as low as 300, but the average was about 400.
Yeah, the average was about 400.
And this, and for 20, for 2015, as we looked at what was happening, initially, we thought we were only going to do chip seal. But as Bill said, two roads have failed and they rose to the surface. So we said, well, we need to do the 365 plus the 100. That takes us to 465, which is over the 400.
Right.
And then he talked about the, this opportunity with, with the alley and then it's being synchronized with the work that's going on in Memorial Park. So that bumped it up. So we've got the flexibility to do that.
I like that explanation.
Next year, his pavement management plan could be 300,000. I'm not sure.
And, and that's what I'm, I'm more concerned about. If it's not 2015, I'm talking more concerned about projections in the follow-on years, that they stay more towards that average of 400,000.
To what end? What's, what's your concern?
Well, okay, well, actually, 410 fund is very flush with cash.
And we, and if, if your point is going to be to the COPs and the bonds, and I'll show you, if you want to come in, we'll sit down with those assumptions. I've maximized the use of the 410. I'd be happy to sit down with you and see if you can come up with other ways. But I've maximized the use of the 410 fund for all those projects to have the best impact on the general fund. So if I, even if I said we were going to spend 400,000 from here until eternity, it would have no impact on any of the other projects.
But, you know, we'll, we'll get to there when we talk about the capital projects and stuff. Now, the other one is, uh, well, the drainage improvements. Now, a year ago, back June of 2013, when you provided us that spreadsheet, you had estimated a certain amount, like 30,000 a year for design and 300,000 a year for, for, uh, construction of drainage for a number of years.
That was after two years of $200,000 for the study.
Right. And, and so we had the first increment of the study, 215,000, but we spent 318,000. So are, have you collapsed like the second year of study into the first year or?
What's the delta? It's the, it's the emergency work on Fountain Creek.
I believe so, yeah. I believe it was $109,000 to repair Fountain Creek.
For the Fountain Creek.
Not for the Fountain Creek projects, but remember the emergency work.
That was, no, that was what I was talking about earlier in the Safeway emergency. I thought that was.
No, say, let, let me explain the 370. That includes $155,000 for the second year of the stormwater management plan, just as we planned originally.
Okay.
It includes $166,000 because I've got the proposal from the engineering firm to do the design for the necessary improvements in the Safeway reach. And then I've included a $45,000 budget there because we probably are going to have to do something in Safeway reach to keep things together until we can get construction or the Walmart reach or wherever. I've given myself $45,000 to do some emergency work, whatever comes up.
Okay, so the, the request in 2015 doesn't necessarily reflect the results of the study, which is still ongoing.
Not at all.
It is reflecting actual work that needs to be done in 2015 next to Safeway. Plus the second phase of the study.
Right, right.
Also that 370 is all engineering work.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with the constant three, stream of 330,000 from 16 on.
That is correct.
But those numbers, of course, will have to be dependent on what the study comes up with as we need necessary.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, what's the expiration date on the pavement management plan?
Well, this, this iteration will end in, in about three years and we need to, I'm already thinking about, we need to redo it. We need to recock. Already talking to people about doing that. We just need to kind of start over and recock. Because we survey, we physically surveyed all of our streets back in 2008, I think. And when we updated it, we basically did a math problem. We validated what, how things were degrading by a couple of samples. We found that our streets in general were not degrading as quickly as we had originally thought. So we projected their condition and updated our plan based on running a computer model, basically running math problem. Uh, some things have held up better than others. That's why probably in about two, three years, we need to start over, bring them in and reassess 55 miles of streets, again, recock and, and go on.
Probably every five years we should do that.
About every five years. It's interesting to note, though, I just got to share this because I met with the contractor yesterday. And it was very encouraging to hear that we are one of, they said only about six communities statewide that are, uh, is progressive and proactive on pavement maintenance and ahead of the curve and having the condition of streets that we have. So that's a testament to our, our, our program and the support that you've given us and, and the department and the city manager to maintain our streets. So.
Now, the mathematical model, the tools that you're using, it's basically MicroPaver.
No, we're not using MicroPaver. That's.
They've just taken one to 100 and made it one to 10 and, and, you know, digital.
Well, we use the StanTech system. It was a proprietary system that StanTech did. But it's very similar to the MicroPaver program, which is a computer program. And when we do the next iteration, we may move to Microsoft Paver. That said, I had them, uh, digested all down to an Excel spreadsheet and maps that I can use. And that's what we manage off of. And then we take their, their numbers, their data, our streets crew chief, our inspector, myself. Now, then we add the common sense, you know, reality approach to it. And so then we adjust it each year.
Yeah, and that's the direction I was going to because really you need to have a yearly look at this where you have your street people out there doing their work. You're familiar with their work.
They are.
And MicroPaver is, is geared not to engineers. It's to the technicians that collect the data. They just say, okay, it's alligator cracking or whatever. And they can assess it with, through this tool. And they, as they're going out doing this, they can just be using this to update the information rather than every five years paying $50,000 to an engineer to do it.
Well, it's a little different that. We are doing the daily, I mean, they are out there every day assessing the streets. But the benefit of the consultant in doing it, it, it puts it all to a standard and gives us a master plan for five years. We, our, our guys, I mean, we could train them and have them inspecting and doing all that data entry. That just takes them away from doing something else. But this has proven to be a good management tool, a management tool at our level. We can have that discussion in two to three years. We're doing it every day informally and that's how we adjust things. But having the plan that generates the maps, that generates the database that we can use, sort and all of that uh, is, is very valuable to me as the manager.
No, I was just saying that technicians are out there collecting it anyway. They might as well be trained to use.
They're not technicians.
Whose technicians are you referring to?
The guys that do the, patch the.
They're streets crew guys. They're not, they're not engineering technicians.
They're not pavement experts. There, there are seven of them. And, you know, that if you pull them to, if we train several of them to do that, as Bill said, you're pulling them from doing something else.
But there are down periods, like.
And I'd like for you to find one for me.
Okay, but.
Next.
Illinois keeps a course for about $2,900.
Councilman Carlson.
Where are we going with this?
If these guys see a hole in the road, they let Bill know.
Yeah, I just wanted to be assessed on a technical basis. I mean, using a good tool.
Please, let's go on to the next.
I think we're done with the last fund.
My road's great.
If I'm not mistaken.
We try.
Anything else on the street capital fund? So with, with that, that's all that we had scheduled for this evening. I'm happy to go into other funds if you want to. We've still got an hour before we finish.
What's going on?
Let's continue.
We're going to, we're going to stick to the schedule. We'll stick to the schedule.
So we then will next time talk about the downtown development authority fund. It's water and wastewater and, uh, others as you need to, if we need to revisit them. Before we leave the, before we leave tonight though, council, I would like for you to provide me some guidance on if and when you want to, or if you want to have a work session. You told me when. You told me that you could do it October 27th. But I need to know if you want to have that. And perhaps we have that discussion a little bit later.
Carol mentioned something that probably better after the election.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. If we have a discussion at all, it would be after the, the ballot initiative was decided. Even though we're all available on the 27th, I don't know what we would discuss then. I think it might be more appropriate to wait until after we find out the results of the election.
Okay. As, if, my general thinking is that regardless of the outcome of the election, we're going to be moving forward with fleet maintenance and Memorial Park. That's some of the direction I think you've given me. So I'm not going to push on the COP issue though, until we know the outcome of the election because the financing of that is dependent upon that outcome.
Yes.
But I'm going to continue to do the homework necessary for those two projects. Okay, and of course, I and your staff are ready to answer any questions at any time. We're going to as much detail as you want on the budget. Thanks for your patience.
So we're not meeting on the 27th then because.
I didn't hear.
We're only going to meet.
Well, I think we've done pretty much tonight.
Yep.
What I, I wanted to.
Okay.
And, uh, so the only meeting perhaps we need is, would be after the election on the capital projects. Okay?
So we'll make that decision after the election.
We're going to have a council meeting on November 6th. We can, uh, I'll come up with some, some dates and let, we can think through that. Okay.
Is that our, is that our next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is.
Well, thanks. I want to thank staff and, and David and the, the whole staff. Just, um, for me, first time through this, and I just think, great job and, and, uh, really appreciate it. And everyone works hard and does a great job, as I'm finding out is always the case. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, we can move on to public comment. Items not on the agenda. And I don't have anyone that has. Items not on the agenda, and I don't have anyone that has signed up today, so if we don't have anybody else, we'll move on to number twelve and reports, and I don't have any reports either. But I'll go to my own little report here, and I've got a list, first and foremost, I think, important for everybody to certainly vote, the mail-out ballots have been received by some yesterday, today, tomorrow. Obviously, it's a great responsibility that we all have and a privilege, and so, please, everybody, get out and vote and be as educated as you possibly can in that process, so that's very, very important. I think those ballots need to be in by the third, is that correct? Or can they be in by the fourth?
They can be dropped off by the fourth, but they need to be mailed. If they're going to be mailed, they have to be mailed, so they're received by the fourth.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if there's someone out there that's not registered, they can register until the fourth and vote on the fourth, is that correct?
That's correct, and they need to contact the Teller County Click and Recorder's office.
Okay, that's good information. Friday, October seventeenth is the third Friday Art Walk Downtown, five to eight. Thursday, October twenty-third, Teen Center Open House for the community is from five to seven. Proud to say that the Swishalay will host next Friday, October twenty-fourth, Teacraft's Top Hat and Tails fundraiser, and we will, we will do all we can to raise as much as we did last year without having to charge, or charge very little to Teacraft. Last year, I don't remember the number, but it was close to five digits, so, appreciate everybody taking part of that, and you can sign up anytime between now and then. Saturday, November first, Habitat for Humanity, Stilettos Studs, Las Vegas Style fundraiser, and you can call six eight seven forty-four forty-seven for information. I failed to say, for Teacraft, you can call six eight six seventy-seven oh seven. Thursday, November sixth, Chamber Lunch and Learn, advertising your small local business, and you can call Deb or somebody at the Chamber, six eight seven nine eight eight five. Last, I've got Thursday, November sixth, I'm sorry, Thursday, November sixth, Chamber Fall Business Expo, five to seven. That usually sells out, is it sold out already?
Sold out, we have a waiting list right now, and since that's also council line, I would encourage you all to come have food before you come back in.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have. Council?
Yes. Yes, this lovely plaque is one of five that the Historic Preservation Committee has purchased for five landmarks. I think all of these are going to be in History Park, and these are going to be installed on the first of November, on a Saturday, at a ceremony slash refreshments, small tour of History Park, and as each building is presented with its plaque, there'll be a little story about that building, but that is open for everyone to attend, and then the refreshments will be afterwards at the museum center. Anything else on that, Sally?
Where, where is History Park?
History Park is first of November. History Park is over there by the library where the collection of buildings are, and that's at eleven, eleven o'clock. It's heavy.
Thank you. Anybody else?
It's going to last another hundred years.
Mr. Braveto, welcome.
I thought I'd mention that this is Creative Arts Month, and there's one date that you did miss, Sunday is October twenty-sixth, from two to four, featuring the artwork of some of the elementary fifth graders, as well as some others. We have live performances from some groups there, too, guitar and all that stuff, so celebrating Creative Arts Month, and that's one of our, that's one of the creative arts' big events for this year. So that's between two and four on October twenty-sixth. Those paintings actually will be available at some of the businesses before that as well, but the, you know, culmination of that is at the, at the Cultural Center, the kids will have an opportunity to sell some of their prints and sign them and stuff like that, and they may even sell some of their original artwork, too, so it gives them that kind of experience, so it should be a fun time, a lot of people, so I'll encourage you to go and support it.
November, I mean, excuse me.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth at the Cultural Center, two o'clock.
Two to four.
Great, that's great, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Brian and I attended last week the Housing Colorado Conference in Vail, and the, it's, Housing Colorado is a nonprofit that, whose mission it is, is to get more affordable houses built in the state. Another sponsor was Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, and so this affair brings together bankers, investors, developers, builders, government agencies, and the like. There were forty-two workshops over three days, and Brian and I attended many of them. What I learned is that there are some new programs out there and other kinds of programs that might provide an option for some things that we can do here in Woodland Park, and so I'm kind of excited about that, and Brian's going to add a couple more details when he speaks this evening.
Thanks, John. And some of the people that I've mentioned I would speak to, I've got some input for you on that, so we will chat. Good, all right. Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I just wanted to thank council for bearing with me tonight and actually digging into the budget, too. Got to keep the staff on their toes.
Well, I think what, what Ken said is important, that we did this tonight and as scheduled, so everybody could actually see what, what's going on, so thanks for that, Ken. It was a little bit long, but I certainly learned a lot, so thanks very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to number D, and Brian, are you still with us?
And as Brian comes up, Bill has a quick announcement. Come on in, it's okay, Brian, come on up, but Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, last Friday, after prolonged coordination and requests, the Forest Service seasonally reopened Rampart Range Road, two public access, all the way from Garden of the Gods to Rampart Reservoir and Indian Park. I can report that the road is open, it's in very good condition currently, and travel on Rampart Range Road provides you with a very enlightening perspective on the Waldo Canyon Fire, its extents and effects, and I certainly encourage folks to, to travel the road before seasonal closures due to snow, and you'll see Waldo Canyon Fire from a viewpoint you have not yet seen, so.
Would you recommend four-wheel drive?
No, ab, it's, it's fine. You do not need four-wheel drive. It's in the best condition the road's ever been in, and probably ever will be, so it's in good shape. Yes, sir.
I was a little confused with that announcement that it was open from down to the springs up to the reservoir. I assume that it's open from the reservoir down to here.
It has been. The gates were at Garden of the Gods and at Rampart Reservoir, and you could travel from Woodland Park to Rampart Reservoir for quite some time, but it's now open all the way to Colorado Springs, or all the way up from Colorado Springs.
How long does that ride take?
Took me an hour and five minutes today.
From here to Garden of the Gods?
From Garden of the Gods up to here, so.
Great, that's good news, thank you.
It is, it's excellent news.
Thanks, Bill. Brian?
Just one thing, I've been through a number of budget sessions, and I'm always amazed, I realize it's, it's the sausage-making end of the, what we do, but it's always a, a good, enlightening exercise, and I can tell you, having worked with Mr. Butterey not only two years, but prior, I have the tattoo, show me the money. He cares as much about where the money's coming from as how we spend it, so we spend a lot of time, and hopefully, in my discussions with council and interactions, you're seeing a theme, two years going into this position, and I, I was telling Kathy, yes, it has been two years that I've been, been back in this position, and I, I'm very pleased to see that throughout the community, we're seeing a lot of progress, and I'm excited about where we're going, particularly in two thousand fifteen. As David mentioned, I really see a lot of planning, design, activity for construction, which is what I love, the brick and mortar side of it. I think many of you already know that. So with that, and we talked about Main Street and some of the things we're trying to do, involved with the Chamber, involved with other entities, we attended a great RE2 luncheon. Jed put on a great discussion, I know some of us were there. I'm highly encouraged at the interface that we're seeing with all of us involved with RE2, because it is a big, it's a big part of what we, what we experience and what makes Woodland Park unique, and so I'm encouraged that many elements that we all spend a lot of time on are upgrading and, and being recognized, and Jed Bowman's been doing a great job. I know Neil, you were there, David, and, and others, and I, I was real, real proud of Jed that day. The Woodland Station is forefront in our mind. We had at our last DDA meeting, the Corzekas, Bob and Carol, and the Boeing Family Entertainment Facility, they gave an update that is moving along aggressively. We have an opportunity, and, you know, obviously, the Aquatic Center, a boat looming, if that goes green, we have an opportunity for two major projects to coexist in design, planning, and construction within two fifteen. We're going to take every opportunity to get economies of scale, particularly with infrastructure. I know I've spent a, a number of time with various council folks and individuals that have an interest on the ground with that, so you know what we're dealing with. One aspect of that that circles back is the fleet maintenance building. I'll be working with Bill on a DOLA Energy Mineral and Impact Grant, which, if we're successful there, those dollars will circle back into aquatic and other activities, so there's, there's a lot of circular activity on the grant side and on the revenue side that'll be important, particularly if we hit that green light with the aquatics facility. We also have, Sally sent on email today with Kip Unruh on Lot Two, we're going to have a smart meeting next week relative to what they want to do on Lot Two. Again, construction startup in two thousand fifteen, so again, can't say it enough, it can, we could have a lot of projects happening within the timeframe in, over the next twelve months. Again, I'm very active, I mentioned about with the hospital waterline loop, you'll see surveying going on, we have engineering right now, program for construction, more than likely, spring of two thousand fifteen for that, but we'll have design and permitting, et cetera, as we move forward with that.
But will the skilled nursing facility be able to proceed at the same time?
Yeah, they're, we're going to run a parallel track. I really want to stay ahead of them if we can. They're really, they're starting now, if you're out there.
Well, ahead of groundbreaking.
Right, and, and if you know Bob Schleicher, he's going to try to do everything he can within his powers to get that ahead of schedule of the developer, and, but I think a lot of the activity will start in the spring of two thousand fifteen in terms of what they'll be able to get done, and, and yes, we want to stay ahead or parallel with them. Kip will stay on me, he'll say, remember, no CO until we get that waterline loop connected, and, and we're very much working together to make sure that happens, so. The one thing, I, I get feedback from the community and council and others about what's going on with Trail Ridge Apartments. We did a site visit, many of you have met Deborah Genger, she's the lease consultant. Their current projection is for a mid-December CO for the first building, I hope that's accurate. They have a CO on the clubhouse. The, they currently have fifty-seven reservations for rooms. They've had some delays, and that has cost them, but today, as of yesterday, they had fifty-seven reservations, so that's encouraging, and eighty percent of those are from outside of the community, according to Deborah, so that's another interesting metric that we'll follow as the project leases up, because it's going to give us a lot of good information. Woodland Hardware signage, I know some of that hit the paper, and some of you have asked questions. We have a sign, we're working with Woodland Hardware on a temporary monument sign. Sally's been working with us. David and I walked in, Sally, in the field yesterday and, and found the place to put it. The Redarmals, I think, are pleased with that. We're working on a, a longer-term monument sign that will be for Woodland Station and also some of the more major developments within Woodland Station, and I'll keep council apprised of, of where that is. It's going to be architecturally, from a design perspective, interesting and significant, so again, I'll, I'll keep you updated on that. And as John mentioned, we attended the housing conference. One thing that we have done over the last year, Pike's Peak Association of Realtors gave us a grant for eight thousand, one of their objectives is affordable housing, so we are embarking on creating a nonprofit organization. We do not have a housing authority in Teller County or Woodland Park or a nonprofit, so we are going to partner with other agencies, as, as John mentioned, CHAF, Colorado Housing Finance Agency, Division of Housing, also the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments, Autumn Dever is their director there, they have a division, they have a housing component, much like Pike's Peak, COG handles transportation, Upper Arkansas handles housing. So we'll be working with them, modeling various programs, updating our housing studies, and really get into doing some affordable housing. One is in and around Woodland Station, and again, I'll keep council updated, because that'll have significance to everything we're doing, particularly, again, if the, if the Aquatic Center green light, so lots of exciting activity there. I enjoyed the conference with John, as always, they know who we are, John and I, when we come in the room and, on a, on a housing, and that's kind of encouraging, because I'll tell you, there's a link, if you know DOLA, CHAF, Division of Housing, they all sort of hang out together, and it helps us with some of these other grants, C D B G, and others, Energy Mineral Impact, so it's good to have the exposure and the interface, and it's good to have this kind of representation, and council support, I will tell you. As Bill mentioned, it does help, particularly when we get out into the trenches. Finally, we are meeting, we're having a joint meeting with the Teller County Assessor, Betty Clark Wine, just, we, we always pay attention, you always get the monthly reports from David on sales tax, we do the same thing with property tax. We want to know what's going on, not only within the DDA boundary, but within the city boundary, and so, and Betty's been very good about that interface, sitting down with us directly, so David and I, Wally, I think Dale Schnickter from DDA will be there, and we'll get a, a full report on, there's been a number of abatements this year, we want to dial down on what those are, and then we can report back to council and get that real-time information back into the budget process. What questions or items can I address from council tonight?
Can you give us any more detail on the sign for Woodland Hardware?
Uh, yes.
Like where it is?
The temporary is not going to be real exciting, it's going to be a four-by-eight, but it'll be colorful, and you'll be able to see it from highway both ways, so that's our first objective. The other one is, is really, we're working with Wendy Bergman with Ordinance Signs, and we've got, our design team with the DDA is coming up with a, a sign, and we're working with Sally relative to the requirements as, as the ordinance dictates, but it's going to have a railroad theme. I can tell you, that's kind of the direction we're heading. We want it to be significant, and so, you know, we'll have interface with the end users and the DDA, and, you know, certainly council and, and Sally's team, so as we move forward.
Where will it be?
Well, we're looking right now, the, the number one spot is, if you know Center and twenty-four, you're heading east on twenty-four, and you make the right on Center, right, and there's that island right to the right. I mean, it's, it.
Right by that lush business?
It's across the street, just to the west of that.
Okay.
There's an island that has, that we can put a sign that we've always thought would be a monument sign. We're dealing with something, depending on where we go with, if we go for variance, it could be eight, six to twelve feet. We're really going to wrestle with that, and we'll decide, you know, what, what works best there, but that's, it's a significant sign, it's not going to be inexpensive. The good news is, I'm going to get some financial cooperation, possibly from the Redarmals and some of the other end users, so it'll be, it'll be something that we'll, I think we can all be proud of for Woodland Station and those end users that are in the project.
Is that, go ahead.
I just said good, that's all.
Oh, is that for the sign in the median and the, and the sign that will be there forever? How is that going to be?
This, what I'm just referring to is long-term.
Long-term.
So that would be a permanent signage. What I, what we're doing now is, because that's going to take three months at least to get that in, designed and constructed and planted. The temporary sign, we want to get out there in a couple of weeks, just so they have visibility.
And ultimately, DDA is responsible for the cost of those?
Uh, it's going to be a cost sharing. All, you know, I mean, a sign of this magnitude could be thirty thousand dollars, and we're not going to bear the brunt of the entire cost of that sign, but we are driving the ship in terms of design and working and collaborating with all the end users. We'll find a creative way to finance it, so it's not totally coming out of DDA budget.
Will that be visible east and westbound both?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Is this like a sign where you'd have, find in the shopping center, that this, all the various stores in the shopping center, so that the developer or the owner of the plaza has the sign, but, so like our Safeway, they have.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a fine art. You've got to, it'll say Woodland Station. Like I said, I. I said, I, currently, we're looking at a railroad kind of themed design. You have to be careful how much you put on there because if it gets too small, you can't see it. And I think we've all seen examples of that. Some good signage that I would give you an example is University Village in Nevada downtown. There's some interesting signage. And that's kind of where we're getting some of our ideas. And Gordon's helping us out a little bit with their designers and so...
Okay, but that would justify them not paying for the whole sign?
Correct.
Because they're just going to have one name on it, among others.
I can see realistically, the bigger, like the hardware, Aquatics goes, possibly Aquatic, the bowling facility, maybe all of Kip's project if it had a central name, theme, or some of the larger end, you know, end users of Woodland Station. And we'll, we'll be doing cost sharing without, because we want a nice sign, but, you know, we're not, the DDA's not going to bear the entire cost.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to comments on written correspondence. Is there any? If there's not, not, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.